Well, so.
Yeah.
Okay, you can start whenever you want to.
Okay, good afternoon. It is, uh, thank you, Oc- October twentieth, second, second, gosh. We're not off to a very good start. It's October twenty-second and it's four thirty-six, yeah. Tonight is the Planning Commission Board of Trustees Workshop on the Downtown Business District Overlay. And I will call this meeting to order. While we're waiting for, um, just, okay, Josh and Emily will be joining us shortly. And Trustee So Bond will be here in just a little bit. Mike Riston should be walking in any minute as well. Elena, would you like to do roll call?
Um, please. Trustee Mills?
Present.
Trustee Mills? Commissioner Bench?
Yes.
Commissioner Burke? Commissioner Bishop?
Present.
Commissioner Berkowitz? Here, Chairman Shawnee?
Here.
Commissioner Murray?
Present.
And Trustee Shawnee?
Present.
Thank you. Um, I'll just speak a little bit to get us started. Um, thank you guys for being here for this. This is our second, um, to really all of us be together and go through, um, this overlay. And my hope is that we come to some, through the guidance of Josh, who he and Emily. Hi, guys. Hi, Chris, Josh, Emily, hello. We will be gaining guidance from them on what the codes will eventually look like. But our goal today is for them to kind of walk us through these little pieces. I've provided some images, um, that you have in front of you. Just, this is all reference, so. We can go off of these. If you like something or don't like something, it's up for discussion. Nothing has been.
This was on the top of the?
Yes, decided at this juncture. I've also got some images that we'll put up on the screen. Also to talk about for what types of exterior we're looking at. I have one thing that I found today, and before I hand it over to Josh and Emily and Chris, I wanted to read this. It was really interesting. I just Googled, um, Grand Lake. I was looking for images or photos in historical images as well. And I'm gonna, if you indulge me, I'd like to read this. Uh, hmm, what's the story of Grand Lake? And it's a tourism website. Nothing that we have done. It's an outside entity. And they write, Grand Lake, Colorado is a small town located at the edge of Rocky Mountain National Park, known for its stunning natural beauty and outdoor recreation opportunities. The town also has a rich history that dates back to the early days of Colorado's mining boom in the Wild West era. In the eighteen hundreds, Grand Lake was bustling frontier town with saloons, gambling halls, and other classic old west establishments. Shootouts, stagecoach robberies, other wild west adventures are not uncommon in the area. And many of these stories have become legendary. It goes through some legendary, uh, things I won't get into. The rest of the words also include the mountains, the lakes, old west mystique. And lastly, Grand Lake has managed to retain much of its historic character over the years. And this actually, finding it today was very serendipitous because it speaks to, I think, the purpose of what we're doing here today is to decide if this historic overlay piece is, you know, we want to keep it historic and what that historic looks like. I know from reading this and several other blogs out there, vacation blogs, there is an image that you'll see uh, on the board later, but it's from Expedia. And a lot of those images that are represented on other websites or forums show the old western towns. You know, they don't show, excuse me, Jim, for saying this, but a lot of them don't show some of our new builds. You know, the more contemporary. They show a lot of that old western boardwalk and kind of better word motif type of image. And so that, I think, is the route that we need to consider because it seems to be a real tourist attraction when it is written, um, for whatever publications it is. This is not the chamber. This isn't Grand Lake. This is just, you know, something that they think people will like. So keep this in mind. Um, and at this point, we'll pass it over to you guys.
All right, perfect. Can you all hear me?
Not well, not well.
Not well, okay. We are in, we're in a hotel, so I'm working with some service, some wifi that maybe isn't the best. So I'll try to speak up.
One second, Emily. We're working on the volume on our side.
Okay.
Yes.
I just, Josh is sitting next to me. He said his headphones are picking my voice up. So hopefully, hopefully, we can get it sorted.
Okay, well, we got you now. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Awesome. Thank you for that introduction. Thank you, Planning Commissioners, um, Board members, for taking the time, um, to be here. So I'll give a brief intro, um, but really I just want this to be a discussion format for you all. This is very much draft text based on conversations that we've had with the board, hearing you all speak during commission meetings, during board meetings, and trying to put everything together on how, um, we can maybe make a more intentional overlay zone to further define and further emphasize this, um, the character of Grand Lake. And so it's, we took language from the comprehensive plan, the existing code, and, and wanted to build on that. Um, and so to start, um, let me see, sorry. Sorry, are we good, Josh? Okay, sorry, we had some, okay. All right, so to start, we wanted to, um, further define this historic western character. This is mentioned in the code. Again, it's mentioned in the comprehensive plan, but we really wanted to try to further define the architectural elements that make it unique to Grand Lake because it's not an architecture style that we can clearly outline, that's readily available, that has, you know, X, Y, Z. So that's the intent of trying to build on this existing language and add to it. So anything that you see in this draft form is, is up for debate. We tried to find some pictures to help with articulation of it and see, is this reaching the intent of what you all are looking for or is it not? And we can, you know, pivot if we need to. Um, so with that, let me share my screen. And I have just a few slides, but again, I don't want to necessarily just present. I want this to be an open conversation so we can take the feedback from tonight and finalize and bring back something that you all agree with and hopefully we can, you know, keep moving forward. Um, so to start, here's just an overview of the area that we're looking at. Um, we're defining it as this Central Business District Overlay Zone to really emphasize the core commercial area in the town along with the area by the lake that continues that commercial element that the zoning code allows for and that is currently existing. And so we wanted to emphasize this main corridor. Um, it's something that can be modified, whether we want to expand it or focus on it for now and see in the future, it, it could potentially grow if that's something that the town wants to see. So because it's an overlay zone, that, um, the defining boundaries can change and be modified over time. Um, so I just wanted to, you know, make that point that it's not necessarily the area that you see may not be the entire area in the future because maybe it's something that you, you determine as we're working through, um, implementation. Maybe it does need to be expanded or maybe it needs to be focused further in. So keep that in mind while you're discussing, um, some of the, the guidelines that are, you know, potentially proposed. But really, the intent is to, again, reinforce and clarify the code language that is existing and emphasize that historic western character and how it's unique to Grand Lake. Um, the purpose is to provide clear language. So we don't want to, we want to avoid some of the subjectiveness that has been an issue in the past and really make it enforceable and, um, clear for applicants and clear for staff and commissioners and board members when reviewing. So as much as we can, can define anything, you know, the better. And then, again, just looking at the location from Broadway to Hanukkah and then from Park Ave to Lake Ave. So that's the general boundary. Um, but again, everything here is up for discussion. So I've touched on this a little bit. Again, we're trying to further define the western character and how it's unique to Grand Lake and how Grand Lake's identity relates to its history. And so, um, again, it's not a specific architectural style that we can clearly, you know, articulate. It kind of has to be driven from what's existing and, um, you know, go from there. And, and some of the buildings that may no longer be there, but we've seen in the past and, and where we want to go with them. And with all of that, we're looking at building forms, materials, and then colors, texture, and all of that.
Is it just open discussion now?
Yeah, so, so now I kind of want to go through, we, we have these different guidelines proposed. I hope everyone had a chance to read through, um, some of the materials. And we can kind of go through each guideline one by one, but I do want it to be discussion based because, um, there's a lot of text on the screen. I don't want to just read it off. Um, I want to gauge whether you, you think this is, you know, what direction it should go in. Um, and again, this was all taken from feedback that we've heard. And so if we've, you know, have heard something incorrectly, let us know and we can re, you know, reformat whatever, um, text we need to. Um, so starting with color and materials, we wanted to, there's a little bit in the code about, um, you know, preferred colors, but we kind of wanted to emphasize the neutral tones that are desired, where accent colors are appropriate, and indicating that, you know, trim, fascia, and doors are maybe where the accent elements are more appropriate in the context for Grand Lake, um, and different ways to achieve that, whether it's monochromatic, tonal, monochromatic, or a contrasting color, um, that is complementary.
Are we including window panes as part of trim?
Um, I don't, I guess we don't have that listed, but yes, I would consider that part of the, the trim and an extension of that. But I could clearly define that.
Yeah, I, I think we can add it. Um, I do have a comment open for discussion in regards to bright high contrast accent color. I think the board already knows my thoughts on this. We've got Bob Scott's building and I like it. And we've got Sunnyside cottages with the yellow trim. There's numerous other log cabins around that have bright colored trim. Um, I, I think it's.
It adds character.
It adds, it adds character, but, but it also isn't like overpowering or takes away from any of the authenticity. Um, I think it's charming.
I tend to agree. Yeah, I mean, it gets us away from all brown and gray, green. You know, it is just a trim, uh, not like an accent or anything, just a trim color that is appropriate.
Well, I don't, looking at the write-up, it really emphasizes muted tones. Um, to me, western is not cowboys. Western is mining towns, right? That's kind of what we look like. Um, and the mining towns, I always go back to, um, California, the highway forty-nine, the old rush towns. Those buildings are every freaking color you put in the head. They're purple, they're orange, they're yellow, they're whatever. I like that. No, I don't, no, I don't, I think you're correct. I mean, monochromatic is not what we want. We need accents. We need some, some color, some brightness, and I'm like, yeah.
No, I, I, I don't necessarily want like a fully purple building, um, like, like Tootsie's in Broadway. But I, I think definitely allowing the brightly colored trim is something that's appropriate here.
Historically speaking, um, mining towns in central city is an example. When particular miners or, you know, gold rushers hit a line and started making money, they, they would color their home or their building because it costs more money to have purple or pink. And so that was a way to let people know we were, we were esteemed miners. And so I do think there's a piece of that deciding on whether or not we want to allow trim. You know, one of the words that Emily said is we don't want to be too subjective here. And so really defining, do we want it just the trim or are we going to allow a fully purple building? You know, that type of thing, I think is important. And so give me a feel of where you're at with that. Let's take that right now. Are you good with the, the trim pieces using Bob's and Lou's as an example? And are there any colors? And it's hard because off the top of my head, if you said turquoise, or not turquoise, well, it is turquoise. You know, certain colors, are, are we like, oh, absolutely not. There was a lot of controversy, as some of you will remember, with the bright green building that was painted. And so, you know, that's not, that's a whole building. So if we don't want that, then we can speak to that.
Yeah, I think so, but I think on that one, uh, it's not very possible. It's like, oh, well, actually, it was within our code colors and I didn't.
It was not, as I remember, it was not within the code. And then somebody was given the green light and they shouldn't have been.
Well, I didn't get change.
That would be a question for Mr. Crowell.
And so one of the options to address this, we did propose if a variance was requested for building color or material, documentation demonstrating historical use of the proposed color or material is required. So, um, you know, if something were to be rebuilt, let's say, and it was a white building, um, and there's some documentation that this, this white building has been there and is, is, you know, a feature of Grand Lake, that that would be something that could go through a variance process just as another, um, thing to consider. Again, that might be maybe more subjective than we want it if, if we agree that we can open up some of the color, options.
Okay, did we ever come to an agreement on white? I, I personally have no issues with white. Um, I feel like it's probably pretty readily available historically. Um, we've got the Mergantile, it's all white.
Well, if, if we're operating under the county's color codes, which we have for some time, white is not an acceptable color according to the county, even though.
And the code discourages it right now.
Even the fact that the county is white nine months out of the year with snow. Um, there was a lot of controversy at that time about whether that should be allowed.
Do you know the reasons why they were saying no to white at that time?
I don't.
Okay.
I thought it was retribution against one of property owners that made a development of it white.
Oh, okay, okay.
I think that's where we can.
Okay. Well, just curiosity. No, that's what Judy was saying is that currently, and Emily, that it's not in our code now. But take, take the Mergantile, for instance, they have considered, yes, it's, it's a historical building. So if they went for any grant money to improve it, then historical is usually a correct, Emily, they'd want to keep it the way it is. So I think we may need to change that piece of it.
Well, it's a decision that was important and that's for every time.
Right.
And they can better paint it, or repaint it that way.
Okay. Does that answer that question for you, Emily, and address Julie's comment?
Yeah, what I'm hearing is that we can, you know, maybe open up some of the color wheel and, um,
I think it's.
Yeah.
At one time, we had some problems as well with, um, paint colors because everybody in town knew that there was nobody in town policy to enforce any regulations on weekends. So they come up and paint their building on a weekend and then when they got caught with it, would just declare that they didn't have enough money to remain at the one of the town remaining.
And, you know, color is just like a historically difficult item to regulate. It's, you know, there's so many different hues and colors and, and what is the threshold of brightness? And, you know, everyone sees it differently as well, so it, it is a difficult thing to regulate just off the bat. You know, no one has a perfect measurement for color. Um, but as part of that, one of the things to just emphasize in this section could be, and we have it here, the material sample board must be presented, um, to the commission and to the board for review prior to approval of the development application, which does add another layer of eyes on the actual color and the actual material.
I think part of my concern would be with whatever we decide on colors.
Right.
You have to have someone to enforce it.
And we.
Without a planning person, uh, we don't have anybody to enforce it, so they'll do anything wrong.
So I think two pieces to that, Manager Pudran, thank you for joining us, and I hope everything went well next door. Um, speak to this a little bit. The question is paint colors and enforcement. Judy's speaking from experience in the past where people would come up on weekends and paint and say, you know, we don't have money to fix it. Now we have code enforcement, and does this fall under his purview, even though he's not part of planning? If we knew that a color was not agreed upon and they painted it?
Yes, because it is required to get a permit in order to paint the house. We have a palette. Um, we have a palette both for the exterior finishes and also for the roofs. And currently, um, Brian and I both look at how they match to those and our initials are on both of those. So if there is a home that's been repainted that doesn't have that, we are currently processing paint colors. So the town would go ask. We haven't been afraid to ask people that don't have short-term rental licenses for thirteen thousand dollars in back fees. So I'm pretty sure we won't be afraid to ask somebody to repaint their house if they painted the wrong.
I've been very appreciative of code enforcement and finding. I love the aggressiveness that Brian is instilling. Does that speak?
So, um, I have a quick question, I guess. As far as the images that you see on the screen, the ones with the X are the ones that we felt that we, we heard feedback from, but I'm curious if, if any of these are agreeable to the group. Specifically, that the trim color, the brighter trim, contrasting trim color, um, or, or even the yellow.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see the bright high con- well, uh, high contrast accent color for windows, doors, trim, fascia. Maybe not the pillars along the boardwalk, I don't, um, but I would like to exclude neon and metallic colors. I think we've got some pretty, um, interesting color choices now. We mean, they can go all the way to chrome, uh, gold metallics, gold flecks, but I don't make sure that's probably still available. But I think high contrast colors are fine.
Okay.
Uh, especially with the verb, it is, uh, probably involved in, uh, the code of color codes. And there is wide variety of options that people can use over there. And yes, they are somewhat muted, not outlandish, or not exalted, not pink or whatever. Uh, it's something that the county has developed, our, has developed a long time, very well ago. And the color codes dug a lot, a lot of flexibility within existing what we have. So personally, I think it's fine.
Is that the color palette we saw before?
Yeah.
That's not inclusive, though, of Bob Scott's trim or the Sunnyside cottages trim or the other little old historical log cabins and, and buildings that we have around town that have yellows and blueses.
Some of those yellows are in that chart. I, I'm not sure Bob's trim is. But I think to, to not get too deep in the weeds here, I would, you know, suggest that, I think the no chrome and metallic is a no-brainer. I don't think any of us really want to see that. It's bad for reflection on snow and numerous other things. Um, but to remember too, these have to be approved. And so I think it's important that we do put in the code that they don't bring a swatch, you know, because that looks different on what you're painting it on. If you're painting blue on a wall, it's quite different when it's on wood. And depending on the type of wood, that can vary as well. So I would like to see somewhere in the code that that color, when it's brought in, be on the material, painted on the material, quite a bit like, uh, Scott Mun and his crew have done for us.
Bringing physical samples?
Brought in the physical samples of the material and the color. And then we have, it is ambiguous, but we still have the ability to say how much of that purple do you want to do and where do you want it? And if that's too much and we're not enough.
Okay, so then as far as materials go, we had limited accent materials and limiting that to thirty-three percent of each building facade. Um, I keep hearing that that's in the code. I haven't seen it and I don't know if it's been updated and just not updated on, um, Muni code. So I wanted to clarify that, that it was a third of each building facade should be limited to the accent materials. And then that accent materials may be permitted around the base of the building. Um, and that metal material should not be used as a primary or an accent element. How do we feel about that?
We've done, uh, I think twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, there was an amendment to the code that was brought before both the planning commission. Um, the reference timeframe would be when the metal siding was put on the Grand Adventures building out on thirty-four, um, at Golf Course Road. We made, they built it with fifty percent of metal and we made them change it.
Okay, well, that's good to know because I can eliminate that if it's duplicative.
Correct, yeah, yeah, we made them change it, but because the code allowed it at the time, we paid for a change.
Okay.
Or part of it, yeah.
Mr. Kreitzer, you had a comment?
It did. It came up recently in one of the buildings just in the last couple of months, that that's per wall, not per building. It can't be like.
Per building facade, or yeah, per wall.
Yeah, okay.
Kind of, it's kind of mixed, which the color, but thirty-three and a third of a distributable color is a lot.
I was, I was gonna say.
Think of where it is.
Back to nine hundred, they have the big steel thing and they said, you're talking, it's thirty-three, I go, it's, but it's the center. It's right, you didn't see the most.
But so this says that it may be permitted around the base of the building, so are we not, we're not allowing it to continue? But so this says that it may be permitted around the base of the building, so are we not, we're not allowing it to continue all the way up, is that?
That would make sense.
Well, and that's a, that's a proposal if people are not. Interested in that, we can remove it, but that is something that I heard going through some of these last um. You know, public hearings and so if 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 that's not desired, then that's something that's fine too. But I heard that keeping it around the base was an important aspect of the accent material and really trying to define that.
Well, as you say, is stone that considered an accent material?
Yeah.
Doesn't ask where accent materials do we have, like stones and bells?
Stones, metals.
Well, and so the intent of the overlay district is to. For you you know, modify what's what's in the code while leaving what you know, what's existing in the code for the rest of the town. This overlay district focuses on this core business district. Um I've heard. That metal maybe isn't a desired accent material at all in this. Commercial district, we've I I've heard comments that it maybe is more applicable for residential type building, but not necessarily commercial. Um so how how do you feel about that interpretation?
Well, there's metal and there's metal. Personally, I'm a fan of the rusticated metal that's allowed to weather and burn rusty and. I I mean, that's going back to mighty days, that's what they were built with.
Ken, I have a quick question, if we show some of the images that we've had in discussions before, can Emily? And can they all see them as well?
Yeah, I'll start my screen.
I'm gonna feel like a teacher a little bit here, so.
Question Jim?
Yeah, when you're talking about just the base, I think it's important to think about dormers, gables. Fireplaces, um there's a lot of places in that should be used. And to make a building look better, and so I don't think it should be limited just to the base of a building. As long as it's done tastefully and the board approves it.
That's one of the things. I don't want to be.
Chimneys not fireplace, sorry.
I want to be teacher Berquist right now, but I want to point to a couple of things in these images.
While you're finding your images, um the uh one point three limited accent materials such as natural stone. So are we specifically um prohibiting false stone or? Rusticy stone?
Well, you couldn't tell the difference clearly.
Yeah, and I think because um the intent was to. The accent materials would defer to the accent materials as listed in the town code unless explicitly. Not uh uh you know, approved within this overlay zone, so and there's language in the beginning that clarifies that. You know, where it's silent, it defers back to the original code um. And I and I do, it it says natural stone, but I I guess I'm not entirely sure off the top of my head what the language is for a.
Manufactured stone might be. So take this image, for instance. You've got the stone that, you know, goes all the way up, but it's not the majority of the building. And my question really, and Emily, this is for you guys as well. Because so much of this is ambiguous and is we kind of scrolls through through some of these images. It's hard to write code that we don't want any stone and we don't want it to go all the way up. When you see something like this, does this bother anyone? Do you guys all like it? Like, what is this? Feel for you?
That's quite a bit of stone.
Yeah, well, it's quite a bit of stone, it's it that's something that would go before the planning commission. And for the com- planning commission to make a recommendation to the board trustees, whether it flies or not.
Yeah, but if it survives, I mean, if it meets the goal, we don't have much to.
Yeah.
That we can say, we can make suggestions, but we can't.
No, we can make recommendations, right?
Right, but.
But they don't, they're not required to follow those recommendations if it's within code standard.
Right.
And then here's where things get tricky, because historically there have been buildings that are hundred percent stone. So um and buildings that are white, so we need to delineate between what. Of the historical materials and colors do we want? And what do you want to say, okay, that was in the past, we don't want that moving forward.
Does it mean historically all stone buildings in our commercial floor though?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay, that that's what I'm gonna get, because I agree with you that some of them work, but I don't think in our commercial, I don't remember, I don't know.
Would uh uh natural stone or manufactured stone be considered? And accent item uh just as a metal and be limited to no more than thirty percent of a base?
I I think that's what's being proposed right now, um but we also need to remember that, you know, how this town started, they didn't have. A railway, so it was very hard to get recognize their materials, they used what was available, which were logs, wood and stone. And that is historical, so if we want to delineate and say, okay. Um we don't want that moving forward, we recognize that it's historic, but. This is how we want those materials limited from here on out, that's what we need to decide.
Just because it's historic doesn't mean that we want. And it's just like what Greg says, you know, these mohawk colored old mining towns, you know, well, don't. It doesn't fit our goal, they don't want.
I don't think that's what I said in this.
Oh, okay.
I said, I don't think I'd want it, one, everything to be earth color. We have darker than the next one, that's all.
We have a lot of flexibility, I probably.
See, apparently Traders does a good job of the stone and it goes all the way up, the first level, first story. But again, they have something windows that it's a very. Limited, yeah, amount of stone overall, that I think it's too much stone in the picture you have there.
No, this is, this is, Emily, one sec. Do you see the current picture? On the screen with the. Okay, so consensus is is that that is too much stuff, so. I'm not sure if you heard that, I just.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Julie?
Um. I agree, it is historical. I think we should be flexible in allowing it, but one thing I want to be considered is if we have, if we put this in our code and allow it. And we have a building that's all stone. And then someone demos the building next to it and decides to put up another building that's all stone, but they use different stone, and then one next to it makes a building that's also all stone. That I think is probably what we want to avoid. Um. Is just the cohesiveness and having a little more control from our wards. Um to make sure that our our streets are staying consistent, so I agree. I think we should be flexible in considering these because they are historical, but I think we need to make sure that we have some sort of protection, so we don't end up with. For Grand Lake down Grand.
That's a good point.
Thanks, Jim.
I've seen that before, it's really ugly.
It 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 can tend to look very cold and hard.
This is another image that we've seen several times, um. You know, some of these have the. False front or what's. Thank you facade, and then obviously this one looks like it's kind of completed as well. There isn't any stone in this now. Keep in mind, we already have a lot of buildings like this, I think we have some images of our town. And currently. Might give you a perspective of stone and metal when you look at these images, yeah, that'd be. You know, one of our boardwalks currently. Big windows, wood at the bottom. Brightly colored trim. Reds and greens.
Stone on the bottom and the column.
Yeah, so.
Looks happy. I I I really like this, I think this looks wonderful, where is this?
That's here at Lake and Grand Pizza.
I know, I was just talking.
Never know with you.
Okay, so just to keep an a track on time. I want to talk about maybe ground level interest and talk about, um you know. Keep moving on and it sounds like there are some ways we can maybe tweak and and edit this to. Include some more color options as far as the trim and the accent elements, but further consider. Accent materials in regards to chimneys, columns, those types of elements and and see if maybe we can be a little bit more flexible then. Um. If everyone's okay with that, unless we have any final thoughts on materials and color.
One, one more photo.
Okay.
Um, yeah, that's fine.
You've got just in this image, you know, you see some of the current facades, the color. I, this obviously has been brightened with your photography a little bit, but. But it does give you an idea, I mean, it's a great, it's a great image. And I think this is, this is one of the photos that I've seen repeatedly on tourist websites. Um the Expedia one is in here as well, right there, perfect, and this one is. The Mercantile, here we go, the whites, you know, little awning, that side of the street, you know, remember, we don't have much of that boardwalk. So if these buildings come down, do we also want that boardwalk to continue? Would we like all of this historic dip tray to maybe have that full boardwalk look, it's something to think about. Doesn't necessarily need to be addressed at the moment, but. The the individual awnings are great, those aren't currently on the building. Um but they were there at one time. And I would imagine because of our elements up here, that's one of the reasons that they're not, they're not there. Um it's hard to put a boardwalk, I think, on this structure, but is that something we want to consider? But this is the Expedia site that does have, you know, the street look, the old, old town. Look, are 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 you seeing a permanent uh roof over the boardwalk? And we don't need to get into that right at the moment, but I just want it to kind of be something to keep in mind if if. A couple of these buildings did fall or purchased, especially in the areas where if you go. Let's say from Rockies down to the T-shirt shop, currently that stretch does not have. Uh roof boardwalk, and so do we want to see that? Because you go from the bank. You know, to One Love, and then there's the big out, do we want a boardwalk? You know, and then you go from Humphreys and no boardwalk, so.
Covered boardwalk.
Covered, thank you, something to think about.
I would like to see one or the other. I think this is the the Craft three building has like a. Awning. I I think I think the mercantile looks. Fine, we've got a couple other buildings, I think that also don't have it and I don't. Had an issue, but I think we either have it covered and we keep that continuing with the walkway or we don't.
I I prefer it covered um for for a couple reasons, I think. And there are a lot of tourists that don't realize how. The part of our sun is in the secret shade, this would provide more shade, make more comfortable and you might stay longer.
So we did try to address this um with our connectivity guidelines. And. It it's something, you know, a covered boardwalk in the public right of way can be a requirement for properties. And um it can be on all street facing facades. Not alley facing facades, but street facing facades. Um or it could be limited to Grand Avenue if that's something that um. The commission and the board are looking for is is really. Requiring that we can or we can leave it how it is in the code, which is kind of up to um. The, you know, the the discretion of the developer, whether they want it to be covered or some sort of covering element such as a. Um awning.
I know, I don't want to make this place look like one solid. Uh piece of awning from one street to the others. I think I always uh appreciated, I did not have an awning on my building. And I liked it because I experienced more sunlight. Because I got a great, a greater amount of sunlight on the south side of the street than we did on the north side of the street. And I don't think we want cookie cutter, everyone has to be exactly alike. So I like the idea of having it where it's useful, not having it where it's not appreciated.
I think the images that you've shown both of our town and of some of the other images. Break up the boardwalk overhang the same way that the buildings are broken up. And I think that that's one of the things when. The all of your conversations have been about that change of. Look and tone on a smaller scale than our than our widths. And I think that that boardwalk looked to Judy's perspective that. Not every single one of them, and we recognize the majority, but. Uh like Polly's doesn't have it, and that's what makes Polly's stand out a little bit more. And the same as uh the building that was Judy's. Because both of those were small buildings, they are small buildings, so without the boardwalk, it made them stand out without. That covered, but I think that. It's part of the uniqueness as opposed to the norm, and I think more should have them than not.
And I think more probably will with the snow, I think they'll probably prefer it, but I don't think we should limit someone if they want a more sunny. Facade.
This image here has kind of a version of a boardwalk, the heights are different. They're very specific to the building. Um. Is this something where it's still individualized?
You're saying, you're talking about overhang?
I'm talking about the overhang. You know, it's.
Like a a covered structure.
Correct. You know, do you like the idea of this, I mean. From your sunny perspective, Judy. Those are high enough that you might get the sun in, it's more of a look, this is more a look and a feel. Than an actual. It'll keep the snow and the rain off when you're standing close to the building, but it's not a shelter per se. As some of the other boardwalk we have in town.
In Judy's contrary, the people on the north side want a covered boardwalk and it's reducing that. Summertime heat coming in, the bills go down and it just is kind of part of the north side of the street deal, so. I do like the variation of the heights and that's kind of what was pointed out in the previous shot with both the stitches and. Roofing store now and so on there, so.
So if I want.
Oh, as it exists right now, if there's a a covered over the boardwalk, which is in the town right away, it requires the town to do a vote on it. The town will decide, but they have to have. That's it, and then that's a variation, some of them may perhaps is the commissioner mentioned, don't want to have.
Okay, so just as a clarifying ask or question. So in in like in reference to this picture, if the sunrise building. If that covered structure went away and that was just awnings. We would feel comfortable with that.
I I feel comfortable with the variation in height, I think that breaks it up and it doesn't look like one solid roof line. Um I I think Judy does have a good point, um I would also like to point out that. Um Polly's doesn't have um a cover. And a lot of her customers seek the shade of Humphreys or our um. Roof to eat their ice cream in, and then Polly's is also not open in the winter and. The boardwalk turns to ice there without someone there cleaning it every. Every time there's a big storm, it will ice up even though the shit on Christ pile it. Once so many people have walked over it, it just becomes a block of about six inches of ice.
That's a good reason to cover it.
Everyone was actually shoveling their walkways as the code says, then. Everyone was actually shoveling their walkways as the code says, then everybody but a covered patio or a covered boardwalk, but since service is provided, people are less inclined to.
So is there a way to make it, I guess, a requirement that you do have some, if you are covering the boardwalk, that there's a variation in height from your adjacent properties or something? I don't know if that's realistic.
Right.
What if someone, hypothetical situation to consider here? What if someone put their awning and covering at the second floor level? And put huge, big, tall pillars in front? An example is nine hundred Grand Avenue, they push that plan forward to the boardwalk as it is now, there would be a two-foot or two-foot, two-story tall awning covering in front of their entrance.
So it's not really a speed for pedestrian scale?
Then it's shutting on, on to the boardwalk, which is, I guess, code, you can't shut it on to the boardwalk, you shut it into the greenway.
No, I'm, like, if you took that awning right there and pushed it up to the roofline.
Correct.
Is that, is that what you were talking about?
No, because they have a gable that, that juts out, so can't fall walkway.
But I mean, covering the walkway, it would cover, but it would be two stories tall.
No, I think the answer to, to that, I mean, just on the whole, even with code now, and I don't think we want that.
No, I don't either.
I don't think anybody consensus is we would want to eliminate.
Well, the stage brush, the stage brush is kind of like that, because it's a cover over the the walk, their, their walkway, which is that de facto, you know, it's kind of like that, right? But the second story does have a cover.
I think that's fine, we might need to
So it breaks it.
Descriptive of, you can have a second floor awning covering over the boardwalk if it's also over that. But if it's just the second floor up there, maybe
You don't want a twenty feet.
Two-story courtroom style.
So do you put a a maximum height limit? So it can't be more than fourteen feet? Because then it can be between ten and fourteen feet, or I, would that be the only, and to put kind of that sort of restriction?
Yeah, I think we can limit it to the first story, we could put a maximum height on there. If we want to encourage height variation, we could try to, try to articulate that, that might get a little difficult. But that's what I'm hearing, I'm still hearing mixed on whether a covered, structured boardwalk is, is something that is desired, or if the awning element counts as a covered structure.
Question, and I think we can, when I showed the different variations, I think that should, I'm just, suggestion, be something we look at if an existing building has the, you know, the larger windows. I mean, if they've got Florida twelve-foot ceiling window versus an eight-foot window, their level may change of the cover of their boardwalk. But I don't know that we need to encourage the, the different levels.
I agree.
That we make the code state, yes, it has to do with the structure, architecture, window size of your building. We don't want, you know, to have those awkward window scapes. You know, in this picture isn't fair, because all of the windows are the same, you know, kind of looks all the same. But if these windows came up a little bit more and the boardwalk came out, that's okay, because it's the way that the building already is. And I don't think we have any issues with the look of the stage brush being you know, that's very Western building.
It, it goes to that scale you were talking about, that human scale, by putting that second walkway on there, it creates that sense of scale, where that's what you don't want to see is, is like you're standing in front of the Supreme Court.
Yeah.
Jim?
In your code, you already have where you can have only up to three feet cover over any windows on the second floor, first floor, any stoops or windows, or you can have a, a thing going out three feet over any part of your building over the public right-of-way, so I think it's covered with that. One thing I do have on my list, if I can bring it up now, because if you're looking at pictures of it, is that, is there any way that you guys can incorporate in this overlay zone to allow decks to come out over the boardwalk? A person is already building that structure covering the boardwalk, can that be used as a deck for the second-level condos?
Like stage brush?
Like a stage brush, but that stage brushes is on their own property.
Or like that, like that?
Yes, and if you look at the pictures you showed earlier of the bar in Scottsdale, where that really attractive deck came out, there was living space up there. If you're going to build it and then allow, it's, it's in that row of pictures, but it's not that picture. I think it's one past it, or there, right there. So that is over the public right-of-way. Would you guys allow decks? And to be built like that, and it's not a big open courtroom thing, that's another good point, Julie, that, that would be very ugly, but something like that, if you can incorporate that into the overlay, because it adds livable square footage to the structure, and you're already building that covered thing with foundations under the columns and everything, and so that is something that I have on my list that I wanted to ask you guys tonight, and so that is one of the things I'd like to try to put in the code, if you would allow that, or even a portion of it, living.
Thought you were going to ask about wagon wheels.
I think we already have one building right on that. The ice cream, used to be the ice cream shop next to, it used to be the stage. All of those, we've already, we had quite a ton of that, this, it was a hard thing to do.
Wait, they did do that, Grand Mount Chocolate?
Next, next to the choc- choc- chocolate shop.
The second floor there, they tried?
No, no.
They, they have one, because they had a restaurant and bar up there.
How do I not have seen this?
Gold, gold roofing?
It's gold roofing, it was being the Mexican restaurant.
They have little pop-outs above there.
There's one down next to the pizza place, Grand Avenue Pizza, that has the hog wire around the, as the spittles, they use wire. There's a patio that's out over the deck next to
The Green Building?
I think so, yes. They have living space out there.
This one's commercial, right?
Yes.
Jim's question is, though residential?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I have a image that, of what we're talking about to clarify, I don't know. It's somewhere.
I think, I think you have to try it.
Right. All right, you're good, Steve, okay. Yeah, down, sorry. This right here is a deck, it is a porch. Yeah, and, and so you, you'll see them out there on events and parades and whatnot, but this, this is.
The code doesn't allow that now.
Now it does not.
Right.
And so
We tried, and Kim wouldn't let us do it.
This whole time, so. You know, but, but to the point, you didn't know. Unless you saw someone up there, you really didn't have an idea, because they have this type of, of roof and continued coverage.
It doesn't go over the boardwalk.
That, that was the question I was going to say.
Yeah.
Is, is that building, is it on, is the patio on private?
On their own property.
Because that overhang that's not patio is boardwalk width between the two columns.
It looks adjacent to the next building, but regardless if that is or isn't, my question is, can we allow it in the future? And because we're looking at the Rockies building right now, and we would want to do that at the Rockies building.
Well, it's kind of like that now, isn't it?
It is, but I think it's just what you said, I think it might be what you just said, I think it might be on the Rockies footprint, not on the town.
Like, like that?
Yes.
And your question is, could you bring that up?
Yes, and if even not of the whole distance, a portion of the distance.
You know, once you start doing that, maybe for a two-story building, but for a three-story building, then you're
Well, a three-story building, you have to step back anyway, the twelve feet, after the first twenty-four.
Yeah, but if you could put that there, you
No, we wouldn't do that, because you'd have to step back the twelve. It's just there's not enough room to, it takes so much out of your footprint, like, for example, and I know I'm taking up your precious time, and I don't mean to be doing that, but with, on the, on the building where the old golf course was, and I don't know, Lilliput or whatever it was called, we lose them ten feet in the back because of the intrusion of the power lines, and then you lose all the stuff in the front, and pretty soon you're so squeezed, you don't have a building envelope for your condo. And so the more living space we can put exterior living space out over the boardwalk, if we have to build a covered boardwalk, it really helps on a per-square-footage basis. And because that's where most of the time people spend their evenings is out on a patio. And, and, and it's an ask, it's not a have-to-be, it's an ask.
How do you plat them?
Uh, you don't, you, you just have to stay within your property line. There could be a plat note that it has a, a a
Ten, is it owned? Ten, is it, and then is it square footage or not?
It wouldn't be square footage for like an appraisal, because you don't get exterior space or garage space for an appraisal, but it would be an accessory portion, and I don't, I don't have the answer, Steve, but I could find that out, how it could be platified. Because if the boardwalk was, the cover was to come down on a building or burned down, you would have to, the owner would have to rebuild it, not the town, so. But that's a very good question, I could find that out.
Interested why it be prohibited, because I think it would be a nice feature, so if we have some, if anyone can remember or can find why it was prohibited, then that would help us make it seem I, I
Rating material choice will be very important in that conversation, that's going to determine the aesthetic and style of the building, as that's going to go along with the prettiest things that and then how far can it go? Does it go all the way over the boardwalk ends? Do we have a certain distance off of property line or building? There could be better conversations needed to have about that.
That's a really good point, Michael, and I think that the, the rating, just like this, I think it would have to be solid if it's out over the boardwalk, because you don't want to be looking up somebody's skirt, they got two dogs laying there, you got, you got old furniture sitting out there all day long, so as long as it's enclosed somehow, like this is, I think that then you won't have to worry so much about the railing.
I think that shuts it off.
Yeah, I don't think that's historical for
And then Jim, would there be a balcony of the third-floor unit?
Well, that would be a step back, and the balcony would be into the step back on the third floor. So I'm not worried about the third floor.
Wall of the third floor has to go back twelve feet, but then you have an open patio or that patio?
No, no, it would have to stop at the, at the, at the step back. It would go to the property line, but it wouldn't go to the, like it is now on a step back. So your building face would be twelve feet back, which your railing would be at, at the property face. The property line, excuse me.
Which is back from the other one, it still has to look back, so that third floor can't have any extension. The third floor surface look, even the decks, have to be twelve feet back.
No, the decks are part of the twelve feet. You just can't build
The walls of the structure have to be twelve feet back, the railing.
Right, but if, if you're putting on the second floor, a patio over the right-of-way, that requires, you can't put a patio all the way.
Straight, straight up from the second floor wall and then twelve feet back.
Right.
Right, that makes sense.
You can't have a balcony on the third floor, hanging over this.
It wouldn't be a hangback, you could have a patio that you walk out onto, but it would be over your second floor.
That twelve-foot setback would be the patio, right?
That's right, from the property line.
I gotta see a picture.
And then just hold your line at all twelve feet.
Right.
I'm struggling with it only because the idea of you
Hi, you're very, yeah, we have, it's forty-five minutes left of our two-hour session.
Right.
And our, and keep in mind that, you know, like on this thing, there's the overlay is, there's really no formal recommendation, it's really up for the planning commission to review it and provide input. Provide their input before any kind of a formal recommendation is again
Sorry, can we limit conversations to one at a time?
Let's see, I'll see a picture.
With that being said, I think there's, in short, in the time that we have, there's, there's a couple of issues, I think that in this overlay draft, that may be specific measures or issues that need further discussion.
Yeah, we're trying to get there, so I guess I'm interested in the next thing.
Okay. So, maybe putting the use of the public right-of-way on the second story, we can put that on hold for now. One thing I want to talk about for sure is a maximum setback requirement, is that something that everyone is looking for to really emphasize the street wall requirement that is in the town code?
What are their consideration and discussion?
I would say yes. What do you want?
Yes, for a maximum setback.
Yes, for a maximum setback. If you don't have a street wall presence, you'd have to have a, a maximum setback.
So one of the things that if we want, you know, like we, we talked about the open space, and one of the things about open space and some of this setback, and if it's limited to only ten feet, it's kind of hard to have a lot of public seating or art displays or, or landscaping in that ten-foot section, that's pretty restrictive, I think. And it doesn't allow for great pedestrian experience to have just that ten-foot setback from the property line. So I think that it really is a, a soft, I think it's too limiting.
So how big would you suggest? If it's not ten feet, is it in twenty, what?
Well, uh, if you're looking at existing, I would say probably, I don't know, that's twenty-five, thirty feet.
Well, then we got nine hundred, if nobody's like.
And here's another, another one on that, is that they have you know, they have, with this open space, they have that a portion of the building must extend to the boardwalk.
I don't understand that, the way that's written.
That's what's, that's what's in here.
Well, and that's what we can talk about.
I don't need to be clarified, I agree.
Emily, would you like to address that really quickly, so give us some boundaries on H and P?
A lot of the conversation that we've heard recently was, one really enforcing that street wall requirement, connecting and creating that overhang from the, you know, property into the public right-of-way, and so if that's not something that is desired, we can get rid of that. The intent with that was to bring a portion of the building, maybe not the building itself, but a structure like an overhang or an entrance way from the property to the public right-of-way to create like an entrance into the property. But again, if that's, you know, not, if that's a misunderstanding, then that can go away for sure.
So currently, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, currently, the overlay that we're looking at, the only property that isn't right up to the boardwalk, and, and some of them do vary, is nine hundred. Even down to Charlie's, the boardwalk is just a few feet away from the boardwalk. And that would be the only, if anybody can think of somewhere that I'm missing.
I think taking advantage of the greens, the green belt and building that out, like stage brush has, and one above, and things like that, provides us with seating where we can still make the street walk.
We have so much of that outdoor seating from, you know, the hub down, and any of those other buildings from Crabtree realty down, right, could, you know, be that as well.
So, so I think the question that's being asked is, say you have that wall, that building wall, that face wall. eight feet back, so that there's enough room to put four two tops in front of your little restaurant, right? Do you require that there be some connection to the boardwalk, whether it's an overhang or not? It can just be open, right? So that puts that whole face back. And what the ordinance says is you gotta have something along there that touches the boardwalk, whether it's a little entrance or a cutout where there's a window that pops out. But it creates some sort of connection every fifty feet. There is some connection to the boardwalk.
On that first floor or the second, in the second floor now?
First floor.
First floor.
First floor.
First floor.
Okay. The street wall.
Yes.
So in some places, yeah, it's street wall. That's what it is. Is that what we want here?
That's the question that's being asked.
That's what we do. That's what his terms were.
I, I hate to say this, Commissioner, you may be the only one that's really feeling this impassioned about this. That nine hundred property is a perfect example. That was not passed and for primarily this reason. Because it was such a setback and eliminating that open space for them as Commissioner um, Bitch Gray had said, they would be able to build in the back or have more space or build more of a building and, you know, have more residential or business. Um, and this is just for this historical district because that's what it currently looks like. Is we don't have anything until the hub that really allows for that outdoor.
Well, let me, let me present some of the planning commission. I'm not in front of it over the air. The planning commission uh, two times ago, uh, had a presentation. They had the setback over there. And oh, it didn't have setback on the second and the third story. Okay? And so the planning commission, we reviewed it in the planning commission meeting, the recommendation that no, you've got to change it so that you have a setback on that third story, on both uh, Ellsworth and on Grand Avenue. And then in the planning commission said that that's what you need to do. Come back to us. And when they came back to us, they accom- they accommodated what the planning commission's concerns were. Okay? And what happened then? Then the planning commission summoned the planning commission.
Both of the.
Now, I'm going to buy out, hasn't the planning commission said, oh no, on a street wall or or they want a way up there? Uh, no, I don't know. What led them to change their mind and all of a sudden throw that in? That's a good question.
Some of us were consistent in all this, Mayor.
Yeah.
And and just to.
On that, and all of a sudden, why did they say that in the first uh, planning commission meeting on that?
Okay, so I think like the mayor said, I think you're in a minority. So we should move on to the next item. This, again, we have forty minutes before we're done.
Okay, that's what I'm just next to.
So I never commented about.
Question right mind is.
Yeah, and I don't know. And ten feet sorry, never doubt again.
So ultimately, Emily, I think we are, the majority of us going in the direction of continuing the look that we already have. The exact putting uh, step back the the ten feet or whatever it is, we haven't decided on yet, but it's definitely shorter than thirty.
Okay. And to support that a reduction or an elimination in the open space requirement for mixed use buildings would be required in order to allow for that type of development. So if that is the direction, then I just want to be clear that that would be the recommendation is that that open space requirement is eliminated.
Yes, I get, I'm getting thumbs up and nods, so.
Okay.
And one not.
Question, just, I, yeah, no, thank you, Michael. I just just, yeah, well, the only one here, so I have a list and I'm gonna try to get that out. So I, I think ten foot's not enough and it's from experience of what's going on at the hub and the pizza place and the, in the hamburger place and the bar. You know, you showed a picture up there earlier of a wagon sitting in front of a building a hundred years ago. That's how they came to town a hundred years ago. There was only fifteen, twenty, thirty people at a time hit Main Street. Now we have a million people a year coming into this town. There's nowhere to sit. There's nowhere to go to the bathroom. We have cleaners that stay there all day long cleaning those two bathrooms at the hub. Because there's so many people that come in there and sit and use the restaurants and use the bathrooms. They park their their stroller. So anyway, my point is, is that ten feet's not enough. So what I would propose is a minimum of fifteen feet, preferably twenty. But that can only go, and you would have street wall. The rest of your building should come up except for an entrance. And but the linear footage across the front of any lot fifty feet would be a maximum of say forty percent that you can have that that open area for people to sit. So that if you've got a fifty foot lot, you got twenty feet, twenty feet deep, you got a forty uh, twenty by twenty, four hundred square foot area of your lot that somebody can sit with a table. That would be by standing there and watching these people try to operate their business. People won't eat there if they can't sit down. And they were crawling the gates and going into the residential units and eating at the tables inside of the residential units. There were so many people there. And they were standing in the patios eating and those people won't be as successful and be able to pay their rent to these expensive buildings you're wanting us to build if they don't have a place to sit and go to the bathroom. So that's my point.
Would we restrict if it were more than ten? Is that restricted to restaurants, food, beer, whatever? Um, because I think you don't want sidewalk sales out there all the time either.
Mm-hmm, I agree with that. Yeah, so I don't know. That would be a question for you guys. My, my opinion of that is that yeah, you don't, I agree, you don't want sidewalk sales everywhere more than ten feet, but it could be restricted to restaurants and bars.
Well, that's what I would.
And what?
And I would just like to throw in there is, you know, something may be developed as a taproom or a restaurant, but it may not stay like that if the zoning allows it to be converted into um,
Yeah, good point.
Retail. So, you know, something to consider there. That might be difficult to enforce.
Jim, one of the things that you mentioned though was, and it goes back to the question with the ordinance. He said only a portion of it can be that. He said twenty by twenty. That means thirty feet is front. Right?
Yeah.
And so that is something that I want to hear feedback on because I've heard that we want the entire portion of the property to be to have that, you know, maximum setback, but maybe there's a percentage that is appropriate where seventy-five percent is up to the front and twenty-five percent can be more of that open seating area.
Jim, any other example? Does the second story still go to the property line?
Yes.
Or is it a care?
Yes, I would. Yeah, and then the third story.
You want to be able to maximize that residential space, right?
That's right, yes.
So it'd be more like a pocket instead of an open space.
Well, it could be an open space if you don't build above it. I see what you're asking, Michael. I, I couldn't figure, I didn't follow that right. Yeah, it could be cantilever.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it could be.
So from the street, everything on a second level continues on, there's awning over the or the shed roof over the boardwalk. But ultimately that commercial space does have a setback for maximize outdoor cases.
Yes, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Like that idea that offers more flexibility, um, and, you know, from, from an angle, it will look like it's all aligned wall, won't see pop.
So you could or couldn't build there. I'm sorry, Christine.
No, you're fine. Go ahead.
So you could bring it back so it's open air or you also could have a cantilever over so it's covered.
It means I have the shed roof over the boardwalk. Obviously, there's no discussion about that if you have the open air.
Gotcha, right?
Okay, forgive me. I, I just mentioned I was confused, so. Um, you all know that's why I have so many images is because I can't picture these things in my head. So I'm walking down the boardwalk and I still have the cover. And a portion of the building is the front facade. And then there's a portion that's underneath that's open for seating if it's a restaurant.
It could be or couldn't be is what we were just talking about.
Okay, so, but I, I'm trying to get this in my head.
And it may or may not be covered above it. It could be open all the way, so it could just jog in like a corner. Right? So twenty foot square. So you have thirty feet of building to the front and then a twenty foot corner. So like say at nine hundred that the building came to the front except for the part right on the corner. So a smaller version of what's at the hub.
Okay.
Well, and I think the hub is a perfect example because where they must attain is that is the um, the street wall and then there's open courtyard.
Uh, thank you, I needed that.
Well, and then, and the thing we got to think about too is just, I'll shut up here for a second. Is if you have multiple lots, you should be able to have a bigger open area. So if you got three lots, you could have sixty feet by twenty feet. Does that make sense?
So maybe proportional to the size of the lot.
Yeah, they can buy lanes, yes.
Cause our code say you have to go into the side battery lines. If we eliminate open space.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what was, can you repeat that?
So I'm just, I clarify, for me, ma- maybe for the mayor, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Jim is using the example of a fifty foot lot. If I'm a shopkeeper, that's a big lot. That's a lot of frontage. Can I leave, can I build a shop that's thirty feet and leave ten on each side?
Crabtree's a perfect example of that. Yes, they have the deck beside it. Yeah, so yes, you don't have to build to the property line. And we have another thing that I brought in and one of the reasons that you would not build to the property line, which we don't want to on the mini golf is because the T-shirt shop to the east of us, they, they have a drainage problem. Their roof is built to dump all of their snow and all their liquid on our building, on the property line. So we have set our building back so that they don't have to worry about that going up the side of their building in the winter and getting in their building. And that's why we have open space next to the building. That's why we designed it the way we did.
So Emily, I think one of the questions that's in your write-up is can they have open space? And we're saying certainly they can.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's what I, you know, that's what I want direction on is, and it, it sounds like we are okay as long as most of the building or most of the structure is to that street wall up in the air on what the maximum setback looks like. Um, but that as long as most of that frontage is up upfront, you can have some open space.
So do we need a percentage of that? That it has to.
I think we do, and I think we can direct staff to kind of navigate what that is for the different size, you know, lots that we have. I don't, you know, the open space becomes um, when we make open space mandatory like it currently is, it from what I understand, really limits what a builder can do. You know, so much commercial, so much open. So eliminating that mandatory piece and working with a builder to say if you want a restaurant and outdoor seating, then these percentages for your piece of property are what we consider.
So think about sixty, forty or seventy, thirty. Let's say sixty, forty. So a hundred feet says sixty feet of street wall has to be street wall and forty can be setback, can be a courtyard or an open space. Because by taking away the open space requirement to gyms, to the developers' perspective, sometimes they want it because it becomes an amenity or the business opportunity. And your job is to kind of define how much of that is reasonable. So if we say sixty, forty, so that means on a fifty foot building, right? Thirty feet street wall and twenty feet kind of goes to Elwin's ten and ten. Well, he's kind of on the corner there with a couple feet setback and it goes to gyms where there's a hundred and fifty and he has sixty feet in the front. And even though those boardwalks, those covers, that brings that street face look. But he has two of those setbacks on the side. This is really what we're talking about. He's about sixty percent on that frontage. And twenty percent on each side sets back. One is green space, the other one's patio space on his throwing.
So consensus being and, you know, tell me if you don't like this. Um, that this boardwalk clarification piece and the open space requirements essentially we're we're saying we, you know, will remove the mandatory open space and will continue to preserve the traditional form from downtown, continuing the iconic boardwalk design. Um, keeping that cohesive identity, but still will come up with a percentage of sixty, forty example for these.
And part two goes to what you started discussing. What's that maximum setback look like? Right? Do you want to keep it no more than X number of feet? So it's not a fifty foot
In my opinion, because we've been through this, all of us, so much discussion on nine hundred. We're all agreeing that it needs to stay up to where the rest of the buildings are. We don't want anything set back fifty feet because that's why.
No, no, what I'm saying is that if you allow forty percent of it to set back, right? If you're saying sixty percent is going to be straight wall.
The forty, how far back on that?
Correct, right. You don't want it, do you want to allow it to be the whole property or do you just want it to be a pocket? So that there is a defined.
So asking a question, I think a pocket is where we would typically go just because of the roads and what's behind them currently. Alleyways and whatnot. So allowing someone to come for a variance depending on what's behind them. If, cause a walk through into an alley looks
Use nine.
I'm missing it.
Use nine hundred as an example. If, if you take the nine hundred building and turn it ninety degrees, so the back of it faces the bank and the front of it faces Ellsworth. An entire Ellsworth frontage is setback. But they have sixty percent frontage, right? You don't want that. You don't want it to, you don't want them to take a building and turn it sideways.
Right, no, but that building, if all they did was move sixty percent to your point of that building, as it is currently, and they moved sixty percent up, they could still have open space on the side where they've got the easement with the bank or the encroachment deal or whatever it is, right? Cause that could be your forty percent. So they could still have the building as long as it is, if not longer, quite a bit longer actually.
Right.
By bringing sixty percent up. Is that right? My understanding? Does that make sense or?
How do you all feel about those types of?
I, I'd like to request of staff that they provide us some examples of different uh, percentage setbacks and depths because I think it's very hard um, to visualize this. If we use.
Boxes.
Yeah, if, if we use like the hub or nine hundred as an example, I think everyone understands the scale there and they would be able to see, you know, what is the best um, for the maximum.
Sure. Does that make sense? Kind of where we're going, Emily?
Well, nine hundred, nine hundred is a tough example because it's a corner.
Yeah, then we get.
Well, and there is.
Yeah, but, but building all of us.
And another thing.
Um, Rockies could be an example.
Well, that's my partner too.
Oh, yeah.
The field setbacks in the middle of what? On the theater.
Great. So I do think, so the RMRT building is a perfect example. Thank you, Dennis, that they are on the boardwalk and then they have a courtyard that it is covered and.
Part of it, part of it is.
Partially. Partially.
RMRT.
It sets back about forty feet and it's about twenty-five feet wide from Jim's property line over to our our building. So it's about twenty-five by four.
So that's an example.
Jim's, well, the whole hub project is kind of a good example. If you think of that, it's it's a T, right? That there's a part of that building that is that face. But everything else is set back. But because it's broken up the way and then with the two kiosks, it gives that sense of street wall along the entire distance while still having that open.
Yeah, it still has to go.
And.
One of the things that the Mr. Gertrude said here, I mean, he he wants to have a place where people are walking along, they can get off of the street and have some place to sit or or, you know, take their kids over and just move for it. And that worked out. Absolutely. Over there.
Would we like to throw in that these types of buildings would be for restaurants or?
Or just commercial.
Or just commer- I mean, this question, because I heard it mentioned that, you know, that's if we're talking seating.
You can't dictate it because it might change. You know, somebody buys a restaurant and turns it into a retailer.
Or you could dictate it.
Yes.
So it's not a private residential pad?
Well, we're talking the overlay, right? Which requires the first fifty feet to be commercial anyway. So there isn't any residential to be discussed in this overlay.
Well, if you're not a restaurant, what are you gonna use that space for?
So rubber ducks.
Any open space?
Well, nobody does that.
A boutique.
And and then if it's a boutique, we have to, to your point earlier, are we gonna have, you know, T-shirts? Mushrooms.
Could be a retail shop. I mean, it could be a rental store or a real estate office.
Food truck. That covered somewhere else that you can't have racks of, you know, discount stuff out front is already.
There's a permit. We have sidewalk permit.
All of stores are doing it.
Yeah, but if you, but if you give them another twenty feet to do it.
Yeah, there's a permit. Yeah, that's a sidewalk permit.
And do they give it?
Yeah, well, uh one does. I mean, I don't know about everybody, but some, about half. And they're cheap, they're twenty-five bucks. So it isn't, we're gonna start enforcing, one of our goals has been, you know. If the board wants them or doesn't want them, we can manage that. But right now, the board hasn't said, no, we should at least make sure that everyone that has one out, we know who it is. So if somebody does come by and ask, it's like, yeah, they got a permit to do that. Um, they they can't sell sequins, but they can sell jackets or whatever, because on the permit, you say if you're gonna have a rack that you're selling clothes or a table that has, you know, your Mary Lou does a really good job with her. She's actually got custom-built racks that looks like the side of her building. That she comes and takes. And those are nice, and she has a table too. And, you know, that it's done in a real way that it doesn't look like a sidewalk sale. It looks like an extension and that's one of the things that the town did with the restaurants, right, is use that greenway space because that's tax-collectible space.
Okay, Emily, does that give you enough?
Crystal clear, I can write it tomorrow. Yeah, and I mean, that is the purpose of this. So we can keep refining it and, you know, I think, yeah.
I think we're at, you know, having the majority of the structure as close to the boardwalk as possible. These little pockets um.
Yeah, and one.
Picture of a little pocket, we forgot, right on the side of Rockies where they have the little patio with the picnic tables. So we already have some of that, but the facade of the structure is up to the boardwalk and so is that.
Yeah, and one of the things um that I wanted to talk through, when you say structure, so the town code actually defines a structure as anything with an an overhang or a roof. So a covered patio would be considered a structure per the town code. And as, so with that, when we talk about the street wall, let's say we have a, someone wanted to develop the property and and have an outdoor seating area or, you know, not enclosed in seating area, but it was covered. And that covered structure was brought to the street wall. Is that something that's also in alignment with your vision and with with what could work and what and part of bringing that up is maybe that would provide a little bit more flexibility for whomever's developing on, okay, well, if they do want outdoor seating space, they can still provide that opportunity. Yeah, but while still maintaining some sort of structured element up.
Put a wall on the street though, right? You could put a street wall on it like, like Rockies. That shed has walls on three sides, right? The the gazebo in the back that you could make it look, you put a couple of windows in it and it looks like a western facade.
Yeah, I mean, that could be.
Everywhere else, but you'd have a street wall.
Well, and if they wanted to leave it open but put a roof in case it's raining on July.
You good with that?
You can do that as well. Yes or no? I think, yeah.
A pavilion, just an open pavilion.
Yeah, if you put a roof over their beer garden, beer garden area, uh what would you think of that?
And we could utilize what Jim was talking about, the covered patios and where the second story has a patio on their property, that also is a roof that protects the restaurant goers down below.
Yeah, I mean, that would be a potential outcome of having a, allowing that that overhang structure to be counted as the the maximum setback portion.
I think we look at that. I think that's good to continue with, you know, if they want open space for seating and would consider a roof, it's all gonna depend on the architecture and the western element, yada yada, but I think that that is an option. The elements are an issue up here for summer visitors.
If they don't provide that option on their property, they're just gonna utilize the greenways. You know, and last thing I want is every storefront, restaurant front to utilize the greenways and all of a sudden they're not, they're so greedy. You know, so encouraging that option on property, I think is pretty good.
Devil's advocate. Um, if we set a maximum setback, are we anywhere near some sort of consensus around what that value is? Five, ten, fifteen?
I I think we should see some examples, because I think it's very hard to visualize because it can be different shapes. It can be a long rectangle, it could be a little square. So I I like the percentage of your uh lot frontage or however many adjacent lots you have. And then I'd like to see that because at Rockies, it's their pocket stands the entire uh property.
And I think that's kind of the point I'm trying to make. I think where we're at and we're we're saying we're talking about Red Fort Theater and Rockies and why that makes sense is because the building itself meets the property law. Say, there is a hub. If the if the property line for the Rocky and Red Fort Theater or the hub or Rockies was fifteen feet back and they had that. I don't think that's cohesive. So if we open up the lane for a side patio or something, I think we need to say then if you're doing that, your building needs to meet the property. Otherwise, you're just basically.
Yeah, that's back to that sixty forty.
The width of opening.
Sixty percent of the building would have to be.
You're wanting to keep them close to the rock. Okay, let's move on a little bit. I think that horse is dead. Um, nice.
Okay, this one should be maybe more clear. Um, parking within the overlay zone is eliminating commercial parking requirements, something that is of interest. Um, the reason be, right now, there is the one-for-one um allowance for parking. But I wanna use nine hundred as, nine hundred grand as an example. The only reason why they weren't required to have parking on site for their commercial space was because they were a corner lot. And so they were able to accommodate the parking spaces directly adjacent, but they did need, I think it was like nine or ten parking spaces because of the square footage of that commercial component. And it was like one parking space for every two hundred square feet for a restaurant use. Um and and given the existing parking, especially along Grand Avenue, is that something that could be relieved?
You're talking completely?
Yeah, or at least reduced. Yeah, for just commercial, residential would still be required to be on site. Um and then there's a clause that's saying like hotels, motels and other um commercial uses that require overnight parking, that would still be required to be accommodated on site. Um for for those parking requirements, but for general, general commercial retail restaurants, eliminating it if there is constructed parking within the right-of-way, but not defining that quantity.
A good example is a fifty-foot structure lot in the middle of the block. You only are gonna have, I believe, God, I or market spots, you can't even build a restaurant with all work done, unless you do some air rights or whatever other options are available out there. And so it's we always compare, you know, a project that's three hundred feet long and fifty feet long, this cohesive rules for both, you know, that's the top part, so. Yeah, I would venture to say this commercial side of things, since we're generating income for a town, that that probably be eliminated, but saying what residential has it is that minimum. It's worth it, I stand, so.
So third over, are you with the change or?
It was get, you can't, if someone wants to build a restaurant, you know, on a commercial level with a fifty-foot lot, you you can't possibly build a restaurant with parking requirements unless you, there's, it's impossible.
Or you would have to provide that parking, like on the, you know, back half of the property and then that just
Or parking.
Right, it just limits the amount of space that you have on site then.
And kind of to the discussion to Michael's example, um what they were talking about, what's at nine hundred? That that required nine spots for the commercial. So if there were four spots, they would require just for that building, five spots at twenty thousand apiece. So the project cost would go up by a hundred thousand dollars on our current code to try to build a restaurant in the middle of the block here.
But would they get away with that because of the corner?
Yeah, exactly.
Right, and one thing to consider is that if it, you know, if there's constructed right-of-way parking spaces already existing, so um if and I'm I'm not sure if there are any properties that would, that this applies to, but let's say there was no right-of-way parking already constructed, well, then they would have to construct those parking spaces or pay into the parking program. But if the parking spaces are existing regardless of the number, they're okay.
The ranger station is an example. So right now, the ranger station doesn't have developed parking in front of it. So the code change would still, he'd have to build the parking spaces because they don't exist. He'd have to finish his roadway, correct?
Yeah, as it stands, he would have to.
It isn't counting parking, he'd have to finish his right-of-way in front of his property.
Right, yes. It, that property specifically is outside of the zone.
It's just dirt.
I think it has some driveway.
It's just dirt and it doesn't, and it doesn't touch the alley. The only access on that property is from Graham. But what this ordinance is saying that if it's undeveloped like that one, they'd, they'd still be.
Still have to have that component.
It's not the number of spaces, it's, it has to be finished.
Cause then he wouldn't have to create a parking lot on his property. He just do the stuff in the front.
Jim, you had your hand.
Yeah, that was one of the reasons that we didn't go forward with the new street wall plan. We had a plan B that we wanted to show you, but we were told not to show it and just go for our point was because by building that whole new building, we couldn't meet the parking requirements and it was too much of an in-luffy to move forward. Michael's point exactly, if you can't build and expect someone to buy a lot, build a restaurant, build a dress shop or whatever it is, and and then pay a twenty thousand dollar per space in luffy, you can't do it. It it the numbers just don't, it does not pencil. So what they're recommending, getting rid of that, you would have to get rid of the in-luffy on top of it. And uh, which is the, I think, the only way you can move forward with this overlay for parking. It just doesn't work for people. Nobody's gonna be able to afford to buy a lot. It'll kill the real estate market. Anybody that has vacant property will not be able to sell it because you can't build it. You can't run your business. So that's what I wanted to say.
Are we in consensus on that?
Yep, I agree. Now, are we also thinking about changing the requirements for residential?
Yes, and that's up for, you know, discussion as well. Is that something that's of interest within this overlay zone because it is intended to be more of like the commercial core downtown walkable feel. Is it okay to reduce residential parking as well? To one parking space for a studio, one bedroom and two bedroom and units with three or more bedrooms, a minimum of two parking spaces.
I think that needs to be clarified though, because only does that change the existing code in your two-bedroom circumstance. Because a studio and one bedroom is one space, a three-bedroom is already two spaces, a two-bedroom is one and a half spaces.
It eliminates that one and a half space, so it would just go to one instead of one and a half.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I do not.
To to go from two bedroom to one.
Cause I'm I'm coming from my world as a developer. And you cut me back and I sell a two-bedroom. And maybe it's two families, or maybe husband comes up at three o'clock and wife comes up at six. Where's that extra car going?
Should drill together, carpool.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point. Parking regulation or, you know, enforcement is is something to consider.
The chance of the day, if they only wanna provide one parking space for that unit.
We're not saying you can't.
James, where's that extra car gonna go? It's gonna come.
It's gonna go on the side of the street right in front of the restaurant. And it's gonna sit there for four days and not move.
Yeah, but you're arguing again with this. And one of the other things that that I dealt with is they put size requirements on there as well. So once the three-bedroom crosses two thousand feet, go ahead and add another half.
I haven't seen that before. Yeah, but everywhere, in every municipality I've ever built in for a two-bedroom, you have to have one and a half spaces. Because the philosophy is that there's every two bedrooms, they're always not gonna be at home and that half space accounts for it.
Yeah, I'm gonna give the extra half, but I'm getting into that too.
In like a parking garage situation like you have, Jim, is each parking spot assigned to a unit or no?
Uh, they are.
Cause that one and a half gets kind of fuzzy then.
Yeah, and they are assigned, the one spaces, yes.
Is there open spaces in down there?
No, the open spaces are behind the old bowling alley. Those half units that are one are the powder. So the extra parking for that half space is outside parking.
Sorry, governor, he's, his space is a lot of them are tandem. So he's, he's complying with the code, not necessarily solving the problem.
So I wanna say a lot, and just because I deal with this all over the place all the time. And we're dealing with it in Lakewood right now. And the governor just passed a law about six months ago. There is no requirement for parking anymore in 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 downtown, in the front range. And the philosophy is, is that developers can And the philosophy is is that developers can build more, you can then have more affordable housing and people have to walk. And and if they decide to buy, somebody just said, if you decide to buy that unit, you're gonna walk, then that's just the way it is. The other thing is is that part of the philosophy is with having less spaces is if it's businesses. And the businesses then go home at five or six o'clock, then the residents come in and park in those spaces and those spaces have dual use. And then they take a percentage of that number, let's say half of those are actually used that way. And so that's how they get around with all that parking and how that all works. The standard is the one and a half space for the two, the the two spaces for the three and the one for the one of the studio. But there are, they are changing all those rules completely, in fact, they've already been changed.
They got public grounds and their work is right next door.
They're encouraging that full time model stuff that we don't have.
Everyone starts to get up here, so we.
I must say, the two bedrooms that we have, they're all in one car, the families come up. They use the two bedrooms, they're in one SUV, they're in one car, they don't take two spaces, we rarely have anybody, I'm sorry. But they they literally don't use two spaces.
Well, I did it with one of the things I see, because I live right by him. Is exactly we during the day, there's people there and then at night it clears out, I mean, it's empty.
Four o'clock, we don't allow parking there.
Well, this is on Ellsworth though, I mean, Ellsworth and even behind like there's nothing, it's completely empty, I mean, other than his truck. There's really not anything after, you know, so business hours is busy and then.
Well, can I ask a question, why would we do that?
Emily, do you, can you speak to that?
I mean. Yeah, I guess um. Why, again, it just kind of encourages. That downtown feel um, but. And part of the thought there, I I know that for the short term or the nightly rental um. Licenses, you do have to provide the parking spaces through that license, so it helps also. You know, you know, if you're gonna have like an Airbnb and have ten people over, you're not staying in a one bedroom. Condo and so there are ways to to. And enforce parking, I guess, without requiring parking, if that makes sense.
Good, now this written on parking requirements based on all those bedrooms.
I've never heard of this.
No, so when you have an application for STR, you need to. Prove that you provided those parking spots on.
Yes, we do, but I've never heard of any enforcement or any way.
No, of course, similar to the residential, you know.
And what the limitations are, if you have any, I think you document. I think they follow the residential.
I would assume so.
We have to turn in a site plan, Michael, that shows the parking for that unit. Every year, but short of that, I don't think.
Oh, for that.
For that, right, yes.
Yeah, same thing.
And and the intent was just to to round down, you have a half a space, a lot of people ask about that. What do you do with that half and? You know, we.
Thanks. Yeah, studio, one bedroom unit, one space, two bedroom unit, one top space, three bedroom unit, two space. Two period.
The six bedroom.
I, yeah.
Yeah, single family residence, I think it's just a standard. Two.
So our license test is two. Right.
We just have, I think, two, it may be three, two better units, or excuse me, three better minutes. But we have two places for those. Yes.
Boggy enough for you?
I, you know, we can work with this.
Well, we the planning commission does have a six thirty maybe and I don't want to say thirty. Do you feel or do you have any more questions for us before we close? You have enough?
I may have some questions when I take all my notes back um. But I think for now, this is at least some good feedback to get started on.
And I think that, you know, I'm willing through the town manager with your questions to put some of this out to. The boards um in emails and phone calls and get some of this.
And it would be helpful if you could send me those um images.
Will do.
Now, now, Mayor.
Yes.
Does the town, the people benefit to see this, vote on this?
That will come, we're right now, this is just a process with. Planning to come up with what we'll put before the town.
Yes, and this has to come back as a resolution to the planning commission and then eventually an ordinance to the board, so. Um, it does involve a code changes, so it it does have to be a public hearing.
This is just preliminary to. Get it set up.
They're waiting to see.
Correct, and that's why we're.
In a terrible.
Yes, and that's why we're all working very diligently.
By and large, I think we're making it like easier, not harder.
Well, and and truth be told, and and Jim is a perfect example, he's been very patient with. That's why he's come to these workshops and attended these meetings because this is good. And that's, you know, some of what we tried to um. Deliver to nine hundred, you know, um, and so we are, we're doing the best we can and we're moving as quickly as possible, Jim.
I think the most important thing that I need to know is. If we're changing the open space requirement, which I understand basically, everybody says, yeah, we're getting rid of that. Well, then on top of that, that eliminates the commercial residential ratio percentage, basically. Um, so that whole graph will go away in the code then, correct? Because there's no way to enforce that commercial residential ratio if you don't have the open space that says what percentage of ratio you're supposed to have.
Is the only requirement for commercial.
Right, exactly.
And then obviously you're gonna have your setback on the upper.
The step back, yes.
I I personally like to see a setback further than twelve feet if we're removing open space that. And that preserves the two story look on Main Street. Is that third story is so far back that you don't even really. Comprehending that it's part of the facade that we see us. A lot of these mining towns, things that we look at are two story.
That was one of the issues that we've come across when I asked. For uh, images, even if they were AI of western. Type towns with what we're discussing with a setback, it it doesn't exist. And so, you know, that's, that speaks to that.
Jim, the interesting thing for you would be if you don't have to the open space. But right now, you've got those two big clauses approved and some of that would have to.
Well, we're not gonna change that plan at this point, we're moving forward with that plan. Yeah, no, this is for the future stuff and so that someone else sitting where I'm at right now can do their job. And not go through what I've gone through for the last almost two years, it it's really nerve wracking, it's hard. And um, and there's just no reason for it and it's not anybody's fault, it's where we're at, here we are. And we're trying to solve it right now and so. Um, that's why I have a whole page of things here that I wanted to ask tonight, but the time doesn't allow. And so I really think you should have another meeting and and solve these items, I don't think you should just say, go do it. And let's move to a resolution, I think you need to have. Another one of these meetings and get through the rest of it, because there's a lot of stuff there, there's a lot of stuff.
I agree with that, I'm gonna sit down with this.
You know, give them a few weeks to figure it out or a couple of weeks or a week and get it back to you guys and, because I got this two days ago. And went through it and I got two pages of issues that I would like to bring up to you guys. You know, so we get some real structure, so we know where we're going.
And if you would and and everyone here would allow. Let's send those to me.
I will.
And and we can kind of put those in front of Emily to put on, you know.
I'll get them to you by early in the week, midweek next week. And then uh, and and then maybe you don't have to have another meeting, of course, no. People aren't gonna listen to me and what I got to say, I'm just trying to give you my input of my side of the story of why that doesn't work. Because there's a lot of stuff in the code that doesn't make sense.
Oh, that's, yeah.
And then we put all these plans together, make these things, have these meetings and then at the last minute, someone could say, oh, by the way. This one sentence on page forty seven, code number one twenty seven dash four dash three, you can't do that project, well. It just isn't fair, it's just unfair.
Now, last thing I would say is I totally agree with Heather. Emily, the more sketches, hand drawn, computer drawn, the better. I think for all of us, a picture of some of these things would be so helpful, it's not the sixty forty, what does that mean? Can it be in the middle, can it be on the sides? Know what I'm saying?
We're a visible group.
Yeah, and and you know, part of the. Part of the challenge with that is that we also want to make sure that we're not, if we're just looking at the sixty forty requirement. When we sketch that, we need to just be looking at that, some things look different. Um, but yes, we will do our best to be able to create some sketches and some visuals and maybe use AI tools and try to. Really make sure that we have intention behind these requirements.
I bet there's a seminar on that this weekend.
Yeah, there might be, maybe I'll learn.
Should we set a date for another?
Two weeks, the next. Now, go ahead.
I I wanna. Creating sketches and and doing that is a is a pretty heavy, heavy lift, so it does take some time um.
Let's talk to them and see kind of what their timeframe is and I don't want to commit everybody to one thing and we'll come up with a date here shortly.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'm gonna adjourn so that you guys can get on with yours, um, I have a motion to. End tonight's workshop, planning commission and the board of assessors. Thank you, everybody.
All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to her, at least we'll call it, so all the commissioners present. And we've already been, well, I guess, kind of put some interest, does anybody have conflict of interest with one item of business? I'm hearing no conflict with this.
Sorry, we've already been here hard in two hours.
We'll move on to unscheduled citizen participation, uh, being that only one member in the audience, I'm assuming you're here for the item.
I am.
All right, so we'll move on to the first item, it is quasi judicial, so it is a public. So it is a public hearing, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, it's this first sketch review of the preliminary plat for eight lots located at one twenty. County Road six six three, commonly referred to as Ruger subdivision. The um, subject parcel was recently, well, here, I'll start um. With the location, it is north of West Portal Road and County Road six six three does run through the parcel. The entire parcel is a four point eight eight acre lot. And the proposal is to um, have eight individual lots, residential lots. Ranging from zero point three nine acres to one point oh one acres. Um, the property is currently undeveloped. Um, and it was recently annexed into the town, so as part of that annexation process, you may remember. Um, however, um, the annexation agreement. Listed a maximum of nine residential lots. Um, it stated that the access road or the county road was likely to. Not meet town requirements, so it's unlikely to meet town requirements and remain unpaved and unimproved. The reason for this being the infrastructure underneath the road is very critical water infrastructure for the town, um, as. You um, may all remember and so any improvements or like grading and. Um, paving specifically could cause potential damage. Um, and therefore that requirement of bringing this the road up to town standard was not. In that agreement. Uh, part of the annexation agreement was that stormwater improvements would be required for drainage purposes. The reason for this being the infrastructure underneath the road is very critical water infrastructure for the town, um, as. You um, may all remember and so any improvements or like grading and. Um, paving specifically could cause potential damage. Um, and therefore that requirement of bringing this the road up to town standard was not. In that agreement. Uh, part of the annexation agreement was that stormwater improvements would be required for drainage purposes. So as part of a subdivision process, there it is a three step process, so. Um, it requires sketch, preliminary and final, this is just the sketch phase, so it's really high level review. Um. And general code compliance, but. We don't have all of the information that will be required at preliminary such as. Drainage reports and and those types of studies and plans that are required at that time. So this is really, again, a high level review of the request. The parcel is zoned, single family residential, high density, that is what was um. How it was zoned once it was annexed into the town. And so as part of that, um, all lots created within this subdivision will have to meet. Those um, general zoning requirements such as. The setbacks one when it does get developed, but then minimum lot size, which is um. Five thousand square feet and then the minimum lot frontage of fifty feet. And then some of the other requirements as far as when buildings are or when homes are constructed and um, ADU is so. That is the general overview of the zoning requirements. Um, other code considerations, um, there is some. Slope and and um. Grade on on the parcel and one thing for the applicant to be aware. Is that development on steep slopes is discouraged over thirty percent and prohibited on slopes over forty percent. That does not affect the entire. Property, if any of it, but that is something that will be determined further at preliminary is just making sure that all lots that are created. Are buildable and have um, appropriate. Um, access and and building area. Another requirement for subdivisions is that. There is a land dedication requirement, um, seven percent of the gross land. Area is required to be dedicated for public purposes. Um, and so as part of this, the applicant has agreed to a ten to fifteen foot trail easement along the county road. Probably or most likely on that east side due to the logistics of the site. Um, this is not currently shown on the sketch, but is something that will be. Looked at at preliminary to make sure that the square footage area of that easement. Does meet that um, land dedication requirement, just to make sure that everything. Works out there and then additionally, there is an inclusionary zoning requirement in the code. And this is required for any subdivision of over um, or five lots or more and a ten percent requirement of. Uh, a lot. Is or dedication of a lot specifically is required, so with this proposal, one lot. Is required to be dedicated to the town and the applicant is aware of these requirements and has agreed to. Um, you know, the land dedication and the inclusionary zoning concept or requirement, but I just wanted to. Um, highlight those for the commission. And again, this is just a a very high level review of the subdivision. And again, this is just a a very high-level review of the subdivision proposal. The next step would be forward with the sketch, and then it would come back to planning commission at preliminary. And the code does. Have specific requirements for preliminary plat. Um, submittal, which does include like a drainage plan that will have to address. The annexation agreement requirement of drainage improvements. Um, it would have to show, you know, final land dedication. Requirements or or details, and then all of the. Dedications and certifications on the plat would have to be updated to match the town standards. Those are just simple um. Text requirements as far as um what's required once the plat gets recorded at the county. And then, um, like I said, just further um, some little requirements such as more in-depth. Um, plans and studies for the site, so those are all outlined in the code, which will be given to the applicant, so they are aware. And and he he is aware, he's been involved, um, but. With that. Oops, okay. Again, no formal recommendation is needed because this is a sketch, so there's no um resolution attached to this um subdivision. Request at this time, and then um the goal of tonight's meeting is. Is to have a discussion intended to help identify potential conditions or concerns that may influence the preliminary and final submittals. So again, talking through those annexation agreement um requirements, and then. I believe the applicant may have a request as far as um the number of lots on. Or with the the subdivision, but that is all I have for you all. I'm here to answer any questions, and the applicant is in the audience. And would like to address the planning commission.
Thank you. Uh, did any of the commissioners have a question for staff?
So with all the exceptions, what are we deciding then?
I think we're just here to kind of give um feedback and discussion to the applicant right now, and then. Uh, they would come back and with a more formal submitted at time preliminary plat. So this is more or less just to get, if we see anything major that we want to address. You should bring that up now before they go to the expense of the preliminary plat.
Okay, question you have, I think it's a ten to fifteen feet uh.
This is just a staff right now, we're not. Make a presentation if you'd like.
Staff, okay.
So do you wanna come up and.
Sure.
Uh, address the commission and then we can ask questions.
Evening, everyone. A little different than last time, I was here, we had a full, whole room, but uh. I'm Mike Rigger, and uh my wife and I are owners of that property that we're discussing. Um, and I'd like to just get some feedback. This is certainly new for for me. One question, should I open up for questions, or do you guys have questions for me?
Uh, we'll have questions, I'm I'm guessing, but if you wanna go and just. We can jet, jet it down and answer the questions.
Yeah, so the land dedication, it was at six or seven percent?
Seven.
Seven percent. My question would be, would the road count towards that, because we're gonna. Um, basically have the town take over the right-of-way from the road going up to the water plant.
The. The dedicated um. Trail. Does count, but the right-of-way.
And I don't even know if we had a path alongside the road, what percent.
We calculated that it's pretty close, penalty rate, that. That pathway at fourteen feet going north to south along six-six-three satisfies that seven percent requirement.
That, I'm not sure exactly what the numbers are for that. I I think with a fifteen-foot trail easement. It it would be close, but I guess I'm I'm not entirely sure.
There, because there could be some additional land that could be dedicated. To equal, make sure we get to that seven percent, if that's a hard requirement. Okay, yeah. Um, and then the question, one question I have is. Steve, you and I walked the road and. I think the path could end up on either side of the road. I don't know if there's really a, any advantage of one side versus the other. The um advantage of maybe it being on. If you're walking up the road on the left side versus the right side. Um, if you add the path there, then it really narrows the building envelope on potentially one of the lots.
Right.
Um, if it's on the left side, then there's more room for the building envelope, so that.
Yeah.
Might be something that we take into consideration.
Which is a part of, that's when it goes to the preliminary, really, that's your. Your choice, your design. We don't try to dictate that, but what we do try to do is when we walk it. You know, what's feasible, what works, what makes it that. The access, the goal of that is to be able to provide walkability access to the park trails.
Okay.
So when we draw that, we want it to look that you're not having to cross over. The road three times or something.
Too sure.
We want it to be workable.
Yep.
Well, how reasonable is a path?
Reasonable grades as well. Correct, I mean, it has to be designed such that it can. You can, well, I'm assuming they would construct it as well, but.
Right.
And I I've walked up there several times. I walked up it today and. You know, just following the natural graded road for a walking path, it should be absolutely fine.
So Steve, how do we define a path? So this is going to be a dedicated constructed path. So theirs would be a fourteen or fifteen feet, kind of like what's out front here.
So with paper fines or designated some way as a designated walkway?
Yeah. We're not, we don't have to pave it. No, 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 no.
No, but.
Because none of this is going to be paved, and when Commissioner Bishop was talking about pressure fines, like what's out here. But it is a, it's a specific surface, not just a dug path where weeds will start coming.
On the plat here, it has a, it has the the road right-of-way. Then it has a ten-foot snow pile easement on both sides of the right-of-way. That's beyond the right-of-way. Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay, uh, okay, so that has an easement.
That dedicated pathway on one side.
Okay.
Will satisfy.
Right.
That's no easement because that trail is.
Yeah.
It's a summer trail because the trailheads are closed in the wintertime.
So it will have to be outside of the snow easement. It would be in here most likely, yes.
The west side is probably more uh agreeable to the the path, right, I think, or recall. On the right side, there's a arbor path over there. In fact, I think I remember being chased by moose and climbing up. On the rock over there on the right.
There's a couple of cool rocks.
Yeah.
Right, that definitely has some steeper rock. Well, and it goes outside of your property, so you wouldn't be able to make a continuous trail.
You know, that was another question I had as well, um, because part of that's gonna be outside of.
Correct.
My, my lots, I don't know if we have that approval from whoever would own.
You would get that, bro.
So, yeah, that was one of my questions, I guess, is just making sure that if that, if the seven percent is being. Dedicated or being satisfied with a trail, which is what has been proposed, that it's just, it's a usable. Trail.
Right.
And designed such that it doesn't corrode and everything like that. I have a question, what, on the plat, I guess there's a, a couple of things. Um, one, it says existing easement to Tamahutu Trail. What does that? There's no trail. Near the very top of the plat.
The trail.
So it's the actual road easement. Okay, so there are one clarification on that. Yeah, I was looking at the aerial, and I'm like, well, there's no trail, there's.
It's the road.
It's a road, okay.
And then there is a spur road that is maintained through easement. On the other side.
So I assume all those already have dedicated reception numbers and.
That easement's been disposseded. Um, one of the things that you'll see with the plat amendment is that. The easement currently has um. Liability requirements on the person that has the easement. Once that, once the road is turned over to the town. Those liability requirements for the, then the town-owned road would be relinquished. Because the town assumes that responsibility when we take the road.
Okay. Um, I guess question, uh, between lot two and three. There's a disciplined space. What is that proposed for?
Uh, I might.
Is it on the west side?
It's on the, the. East side.
Yeah, I can pull up the plat, just give me uh one moment, so I can zoom in.
Yeah, that's, that's the spur road access.
It's not quite, it's, it's twenty feet. Yeah, I lifted the twenty feet right here. That's the spur road, yeah. Oh, this is all lot three, so he has lot three is actually by set with. By the spur road and his.
He just thinks it's a bit rid of the line.
Yeah, his design thinking is that he'd have. The house up here and maybe an ADU on the other side of the spur road, kind of a thing.
So there's just. So there's a lot of flat cleanup, you know, there's.
Then they did do that.
Yeah, there's, there's a, a lot, three and lot two, and then there's another lot in between.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That doesn't, so he just needs to clean that up.
This is, this whole thing, this dash line. That's the spur road, and this is the small lines.
Right, he 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 has at the same. Delineation as.
Yeah, this is, right, what he's saying, what is, the roadway delineation?
Yeah.
Needs to be removed. Yeah, the easement, that middle line doesn't need to be there.
Yeah, I just.
And as I'm looking at this map, sorry to jump out, as we're looking at the path.
That's all part of lot three, if we are on this side.
Yeah.
There, there's gonna be a short section, it'll be shorter, but that'll be on.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a little bit here, shadowed.
Shadowed with, right.
So what he's talking about is this line right here.
Yeah.
Comes out because that's the spur road.
Yeah.
But this line looks like it's two blocks.
Well, and that was a question that Emily had, um, and that's a question that I might have whether it's tonight or the next meeting. It's gonna be a small lot, but would we be able to make that? Yeah, we have to double check.
That's spirit, those. That that road doesn't have any rights at all, I mean.
Who's an easement, there's a over.
There is an easement on it?
That allows continuous.
Do access over on that other top here.
Oh, I see, there again, that's uh Bill, Mr. Bill Neill, which partner, that would get access through that easement.
Yeah.
He he's, it's provided a, a three-residential home access easement.
And then you have on here possible lot nine callouts, but there's no lot nine. That.
No. There's no, not at this point, but that was a question, a topic for discussion. And I first would have to make sure that it would meet the size requirements, the minimum, I guess, five thousand square feet. And if the answer is yes. Could that be an option?
That means it.
And that lot nine would then have the.
I don't know.
Easement. The legal easement is a part of it.
So basically, it would be taking the south part.
Yeah. So not where, not down by lot seven and eight, where you have a possible driveway easement to lot nine, a possible lot nine?
No, so.
Bottom of three.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that brings me to my other question, or my other, I guess, statement, um. I'm sorry, but this surveyor is. Has a reputation for having done, I guess, a poor job on flats. I think it would be beneficial to the town to have a third party reviewing the plat that's submitted. To ensure it properly closes. All the lot sizes are properly done, the dimensions, everything of that nature, this. I mean, just looking at this one, I saw, there's a lot of errors and. I think the town just should be protected from.
And and keep in mind, this was just a preliminary.
Oh, I understand.
It'll be cleaned up for sure.
We're generally see a lot of flats, a lot of errors from this gentleman, so I want to make sure the town is protected, so. Yeah, other questions from commissioners?
So how is the inclusionary zoning requirement to be met? What's the plan on that?
Lot eight.
You're saying you'd get one lot, dedicate one lot?
Yeah, he's proposing.
They're running down by, pretty down by Ford Road there.
Yeah.
Southernmost one.
So what does that mean? The town owns unbuildable piece of, yeah. Oh, it's deeded to the town, and we can build a house by the, we don't have to pay for land.
I see.
So it's another way to build a, an affordable house. So he just leaves that to you? To the town, yeah. We can do whatever.
We'll take it. Restricted to a single-family use.
Correct.
That's how we definitely. So would that be a restricted?
No.
Um, lot?
It could be. It's not as the annexation agreement doesn't require.
So it could be sold by the town for profit?
The town can't profit.
Oh, it sure does, yeah.
But you have to have a boat to sell. We used it for trade for other property, that's how we end the debt with the. The cars, yeah, by the garbage.
Right.
Yeah, you can.
We traded.
Trade, yeah.
So something that lot may be more valuable and somebody may have a piece of land that. May be good for a parking lot that we could swap with.
There's nothing that says that it has to be used for workforce housing or any sort of.
No, it does say that it is, it's an affordable lot, yes.
That's a restriction, huh?
Yes, so it has to meet the general qualifications of affordable.
Right.
Within our terms.
So if you sell it, then the de-restruction would go to the new son, right, okay.
And if, if the town builds on a lot, are there any minimum building, um, standards or requirements?
The same requirements that are held in the zone.
Okay.
So it has to be at least eight hundred and fifty square feet. Um, it has to fit within the residential high-density zoning.
High-density residential.
Yeah, single-family, high-density residential, which is what all, which is what the area is of.
Can we request that preliminary plat is slow, like a slope analysis map, so we can understand where that forty percent is, or. Or they don't designate those as non-buildable areas on the plat, or?
The forty percent?
Forty percent grade that is not buildable.
Oh.
We think over forty percent not buildable, so those don't be like designated as non, non-build areas on the plat, or how, how's that?
Wouldn't she include a billion, the way I understand it, billion of what wouldn't be in that portion, it's not buildable, that is uh steeper than.
One of the things that we did discuss was because there is so much topography change. Is to consider doing what was done up on Tamahutu Ridge. By establishing buildable, so envelopes, that, that way, instead of saying what you can't build on. We're just designating a space that can be built on.
Right. Okay.
A lot of this stuff, just you can't, so we don't want even people to try. You know, we, we, well, we have a couple of those. We didn't, we didn't look at even how do you provide. Um. Car access, right? Where would you build a garage? And then, because a lot of these properties, you can't just. Put a driveway up and build all around it, it's, it's got, there's gonna be cool little angles and stuff, but.
Well, I think it goes up on uh, with that, there, I think there's a. One house they built, it was, it was at a hundred percent grade. But they did it.
Well, and that's why we learned from those mistakes.
Huh?
That's why we learned from those mistakes. And we researched, developed. Those areas, because it's not suitable.
So we're making some areas over here?
It's in a book already.
The both, uh, I mean, prohibited, if it's over forty?
If there's more than a forty percent. If there's more than a forty percent grade, that's not buildable envelope for it.
For the town code.
For the town code that's been around for a while, we're not making that up now.
And if there is, if if you don't meet those requirements, can you apply for a variance or?
Based upon the hardship, sure.
I don't foresee that being an issue.
We found eight building envelopes. When we walked it a few weeks ago, surprising. Some of them are really cool.
There there's gonna be a very deep subdivision for sure, yeah.
So, yeah. And you're probably dead, wow, doesn't mean it's different, but you're gonna build something yourself and then sell the other lots or what?
So, eh eh, to be determined, we're definitely gonna build um a home for our family. The goal is to keep a few extra lots for uh my kids, hmm at some point, build on those. Um, and then. We would sell off whether we build a spec home and then sell it or just sell the lot. Making that with a couple of lots that help pay for infrastructure and building costs and everything else, but. The goal is to keep it somewhat uniform, higher end home, so that you don't have a, you know. A low cost home next door, really. Higher cost home, um, so the goal is to keep them all looking very nicely in the fitting, but with with. A lot of the new building going with the Grand Lake.
Which is also why. The site eight was the lot was selected for the town ones, because if. That that house might, it'll still look good in the subdivision. But it'll probably be the cheapest house in the most expensive city.
Yeah, so if if the town decides to put a tiny homes on that lot.
Which we can't.
I'd rather be there than right in the middle of the, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Other uh questions from the commission, other. Discussion topics that we should make sure we address, um. Or I'll be, oh, sorry, go ahead, go please.
My my biggest concern is the um the road. Um, keeping access for the town water, um, and also keeping it from freezing. And and I understand that soil and snow are good insulation, but um I just. That's a big concern for me because that's by solid our water.
Keeping the water line from freezing?
Yes, so if um you know, if too much is scraped off, then um the cross line. Can drop down and then we remind trees and then that's a big problem for the rest of us because that is the water town.
Where we have lots of Januaries where there's no snow. So I'm not sure, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just trying to understand. So if you have a winter or a period that's really cold without much snow, they're dealing with that now.
Yeah, is that why it's not recommended for paving?
Correct, the current state of the road. Is it is the town's intention to maintain that state of the road. The water department has a methodology for maintaining that surface. Um, whether it's dry or not dry, they understand it's a mechanical. Understanding of that, so.
It meant what drives?
That road, it does, that that roadway is. Kind of off limits, the only thing that he would be doing would be running um deep utilities. In in the right of way, um which he'd have to be very, we talked about some of those risks. Because we do have the water vein and there's a lot of rock up there, so. That is gonna have to take some careful exploration and understanding about how his lines, fortunately. Um, the water, our water superintendent um has given indications that. Might be able to tap water up a little bit higher and there is a sewer line existing, I believe, right?
Goes up. Eighty percent of the road stops just short of the water plant.
So some of those leaks are in a. The goal, our intention, yeah, our intention is not. They're gonna stay away from that road, that's why we didn't talk about the grade or anything like that, it is critical. And at some point, the town's probably gonna have to address that. But once it's dedicated over that, management becomes a lot easier and they become more to the wind. So is he gonna connect his domestic water to that big hawken line that comes down? There are other, there's other ways to do that, Dave Johnson said he wouldn't have to bring a line all the way up. I don't know how that works and there's nobody could connect into the, I don't know how that works, but that's in there, but.
That person might be.
Is indication that that there is a way to be able to facilitate it so that we don't have to impact our main.
We had in the past had at least two very serious breaks and and overflows. Down that road and so forth, and that's all been taken care of with the water department, it's always how how that can be done.
Yeah. Because.
Cause our channel is out.
Someone hitting it or?
Yeah, overflowed. And we had, um, no, the the line itself, and we have the headwaters. Uh, of the water department, uh, just above the water plant. And so when that. If if the park doesn't keep their end cleaned and we don't keep our end cleaned, it can overflow, it is.
And it runs down the trail and then it runs down. Then that's also, yeah, there's, we we have two fifty year flood events on this street. Because of that.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, that's.
So all that's gonna be designed.
But it's also part of that drainage plan that's required in in the annexation, so we're aware of that. Flood risk and that mitigation will happen, it'll be nice to have like a ditch or something to help manage that. That doesn't wash out every time it happens, which is what's happened last couple of times.
I guess one of the other things that's all is if lot eight's gonna be dedicated to the town, um, it probably just needs to be a little bit more exploration of. If there's actually a a buildable footprint there, because you know, you have the the West Portal. Power lines, I don't hope there's an easement for that, but then you have the other power line going on.
It's gonna be pretty close to the other, it's gonna be pretty close to the other house, it'll almost look like a spec home that's the existing. Short term rental that's right there, and the Lopez to the west side, there's the rocks on the east side. But it does lay back in there pretty nice, it opens up.
Okay. But there is a natural space for for all, yeah.
It doesn't have any great views. Um, I wasn't at the annexation, I mean, did did uh Shadow Clip here, did they have any concern?
Uh, I don't think anyone from Shadow that was here, Peter Red Bull was here. And he.
Our service was there at all.
I don't remember the arch service.
Other questions, concerns? Direction we wanna provide the applicants so that they're prepared for.
Um, I I would like to see the building envelopes, um, a lot of these lots look really difficult, um. And, you know, when when, when it's determined, I would really like to see that uh walking path. But yeah, this is a really difficult piece of property, so it's it's gonna be a little tricky places.
Yeah, that's where I think that, I agree with you, I think having a building envelope with a slope map. Played over it so we can understand where those grades are and. I'm curious too, yeah, how you're getting some of them, like. If as far as getting a driveway and I guess maybe then it's just there's up to a house, but. Um, yeah, it'll be, it'll be interesting to see.
There there, it's it's funny, what would you think, five? Of the the lots have people's little campfire spots for, there are people that who are. Everybody's found the little lots, the the kind of livable spaces there. And there's even one in a square, it looks like someone built a a lane two over a fallen tree and they spent.
Yeah, and I guess the only other thing is I recommend as you, as you are designing this, please. Design as such that you're not asking for variances, um. I hate to lay out a new subdivision.
Not my intention.
Yeah, so, but then the the property owner steps to come back for a variance, so. No, and I've walked um all these last several times and. Couple of lots here be more trickier than the others for sure, but most of them are are be pretty straightforward. Probably a decent building envelope and having a driveway that's not too slow, um access it. You may have to have the garage down a little bit lower stairs going up to the the home, but but I think it's very dual. And that might just be things that planning commission recommends to the to the trustees that. That there are lots that can't have a garage, usually have a house, then that gets noted on the plat so that. The next property owner that buys it doesn't come in and say, yeah, I need a variance, because I can't get a garage, you know, things like that, and then. Just sets it up for success for both you and and the town. So one question I have is the, I think the. Requirement is that it needs to be. With how how much of the the front of the lot can we build a structure, is it?
Twenty five feet.
Twenty five feet. And how do you determine what is the front of the lot?
The road, the road, your address on the road.
So the road would always always be. The front, considered the front. Okay, yeah, cause you gotta have a street frontage. Okay. And on lot eight, it could either be portal road or or or.
Six thirty?
Yeah, that's we consider a corner lot.
So you could choose whatever is the um most reasonable building envelope, then you choose what gap us that we have.
Okay.
But once once you make that determination, you can't change it. So that's one of the reasons that a building envelope would be a good idea.
Great.
It sounds like you're working with a land planner.
What do you mean a land?
In addition to the surveyor, are you working with a land planner who's helping you do the envelopes and laying it up?
Um, the surveyor.
Sergeant?
Just the surveyor.
Still can't hear him, sir.
Just the surveyor is who I'm working with.
Well, if you decide to do that, I recommend you get one that knows the mountains.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, sounds silly, but it's not.
We have challenges here that no one else has, they don't understand. Because of um the Rocky Mountains are just very neat and.
So so when you say land planner, is that different than a builder?
Okay, so the land planner would be the guy who actually looks at the plat, walks it with you. Says this is where your envelope should be, or you can't put it here, it's gotta be over here. Um, I mean, some architects can do it, Scotland could probably do it, but you need someone in between there.
Yeah, it's recommended for sure.
Yeah.
To help you with your building.
And more local, the better.
And I guess I'm like, have you, you guys have checked all of the the lots to see if they're compliant now, or is that?
Compliant now.
The lots that are shown are compliant now, so if there are changes, um, if an additional lot is added, we'll have to look at that. But as far as um minimum lot size and frontages, it all checks out with the the zoning requirements.
Depth and everything, so I just wondered like that flies though, probably just seems so narrow, but I guess it's seventy feet, seventy seventy feet, so. So I don't wanna beat that.
Yeah, and and when it gets, we we cannot always double check that just to make sure.
Well, there's a lot of uh, several of those lots. Where it's gonna be, I was just kind of looking at the percent grade. On those contours and there's a. Eh eh, there's some of the lots where you ain't gonna have a hard time finding anything that's less than forty feet. Uh, I wonder if a lot, uh, well. Well, a lot, two and three is uh. Maybe fine, but uh. Uh, one looks like a big problem to try to get it and certainly uh.
They have little castle tops on them, yeah.
But a building envelope, a part of the building envelope, eh eh, it incident at forty percent grade?
It, I don't think it'll make it be.
The only, the only lot that I think would potentially be at risk would be lot one.
Yeah, lot one is a, yeah.
That's that, you're gonna have to have some steps going up to it, but I don't, I don't think it's gonna.
Yeah.
I think it's gonna do with.
I don't think you can do it on lot one. Whereas the other ones, eh, again, I guess the building lot. You know, and building envelope, all of it has to be under forty percent. That's gonna be a challenge.
It's.
I'll take you up there.
Good luck with the surveyor working on that.
And when you're voting up against thirty per, but you said the town's forty percent, you can devote that thirty. And some of the lots may require a smaller footprint, right, to me, that.
Yeah.
That's where I think a slope analysis map will help us.
So how did you decide a lot lines?
Uh, well, there's. The land was owned, the the former owner had several variations of of he he was. His goal was to subdivide it forty years ago, and so I had. Access to a number of different surveys, so started with that and then walked it several times and. Worked with the surveyor to come up with what, you know, at least makes sense on paper. And I'm sure it'll be some modifications of what we have here in front of us tonight, but especially when we start. Looking at the building envelope and what makes sense and how you're gonna access that and maybe where the garage will be if there is a garage. Um, so there may be some slight modifications, but um walking this, it. Each lot really, in my mind, has a buildable uh envelope. Seven, sorry, go ahead. For example, lot one would probably be a much smaller home, a much small smaller footprint. Same with maybe with, actually with. Where's lot seven going? You build between those two rock out properties? Yeah, yep, yep, and it's, and that one's fairly accessible from the road, and he's kind of cool. And it it's, it's just kind of your sandwich, your side, your canyon overlooking the lake.
But but the back patio from that has an incredible view of, to like.
Yeah, well, a lot of search for us.
Yeah, oh, that, yeah.
Yeah, the lots all on the, I guess would be the west side. Um, all, every one of those lots, except for maybe eight, um, has a great view of the lake.
I think lot seven, that's the rock outpropping would make a great picnic area, casino. Uh, that would be a fabulous place.
Eh eh, the the view up there is pretty spectacular.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's good view there.
It was one. Still a sea getting up there, but.
Yeah, about um, one of the lots has, at least, they um. Even having on the news, that house in Dillon that has a, like a poop deck thing going out on a bridge. That there is a spot there where you could put like a little tree house with a bridge from a house to it, that would be complete. You mean that, that eastern spur there, and well, yeah, some nominal thing up there.
But that uh the little valley between uh six and seven. I think it looks like maybe it's only about thirty feet wide, so I guess you could still fit something in there.
Yeah, just be a very narrow footprint. Alright.
Yeah, that's a great piece of fabric in there.
It'll be, it'll be fun, if it turns out, like I think it will, it'll be uh very special.
We'll ask you in two years if it was fun.
Well, you don't need a motion from us, so we give interaction and unless you have questions for us. But the last question I'll have is just in preparation for the next meeting, which I believe is next week, um. What should I have prepared for that and what can I expect for that?
Much of the same.
I I can also jump in, it it goes to the board of trustees next week, so you, they will be reviewing the same materials. That the planning commission has.
That the planning commission has. Um I'll give them a little. Background on on the or update on the discussion from tonight, and then they'll they'll provide their own feedback and discussion as well.
Okay, perfect. And then next week I'll be zooming in, so I won't compete out of town for that meeting.
Good. Uh Mr. Rooker, did you give your address when you introduced yourself? Your personal address?
No, you didn't. Address of the property or?
Or personal.
Name and address. Oh, no, I did not.
Okay, yeah.
So Michael Rooker, fifty one sixty Redwood Drive, Beaumont, Colorado, eight zero one two three.
That's just for the record. We wanna know exactly who you are. Ten years we have to come back to this.
Well, thank you everyone. Thank you for your help. Yeah, you. And we'll work on when the set. The next time you'll be back here, um you'll be seeking a recommendation on preliminary. Great. I thank you everyone. Next time, wait.
Those of business, those of the abandoned, you mean, were you moved?
Yes, I have them. They will reconnect me and they're fully with them.
How many is?
A lot. And I'm doing everything. This kind of stuff falls to the bottom part for me. But yes, they're getting back.
Do you want to tell us how we're gonna approach this email thing?
Yep, we are gonna get a hold of our AID executive tech and get her here and I got you guys together and you like them and. If it's also that, you guys have to use.
So we're gonna, it it worked with today's show, we're gonna get everybody back to us.
Well, I mean, it came to light yesterday when I was scheduling my day for today, but I think for thirty being. That you're sending the emails and I have no idea where they're going.
Yeah, yeah, I was aware that nobody could get it.
We're gonna get it. There are certain claims. We're gonna address.
And we're still good. We um. Then I've been talking about that for years by using the town.
You brought a town email right now. It just gets.
I guess one thing I phone password. My Apple phone.
Apple ID.
Like an Apple ID if you're an Apple.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, you need to know your Apple ID and your password.
They're with that, Jeff.
Yes.
Did you, there's no way you you just can't use, when you, if you would use my. Own email and just say, Greg, there's an email, then I'd nobody even look for it, right?
Yeah, that's a lot of handling for me, so yeah, just type your, just write your town email.
We'll get it figured out. So um. I guess one thing I would want or ask is I understand that the packet might not be able to come out on the Friday before my day.
I do.
Yeah, we spent. Friday before.
For what?
Well, just giving email the Friday before saying we have a a code meeting. I think that would just help begin the plan, because like Greg said, I didn't expect that we've been having a meeting this week and then we got our package, so. Understanding that.
She doesn't have to tell us what it's what it's about. No, just that we're having a meeting.
Correct.
Yeah.
I understood.
That's, that's a high plan a year in advance, so. If we're not on the first.
And we are back on the first and third.
First and third.
Yeah, there's just a couple of months that made it really funky and we didn't wanna mess it up with the rhythm um. The schedule and everything, so that's the only reason why. So make sure you'll be adaptive when you're scheduling things for the year.
We're also interviewing um candidates for open positions here at Town Vault. Um over the next week and a half, so. That should help us be able to get some of these lower burden things back up and put.
When?
A plan of treasure and a front desk admin building. Okay, all right.
Sure, I had a question for you. So uh I guess one, is it appropriate? For. Mayor of the town. To uh. Input. Uh on planning commission. Discussions, uh their planning commission meeting. Is that appropriate? I know you asked, is it, is it okay if we allow that? It's just fine and and the commission did really, but I. I'm concerned that by doing so. The mayor has inappropriate influence on the board. Which the board is a separate thing, separate from the uh mayor and the board of trustees. And if the mayor chooses to. Participate as a public person and not the mayor. Then she should not have any input on what is on the agenda, right?
What do you mean she does with everything?
And just as we have, when we have uh public comments. Okay, except for something that's on the agenda. They can't make comments on what's on the agenda. Right?
Are you talking because she was on Zoom or are you talking because it was inappropriate time during the meeting?
Well, I think, well. A- as as a uh as a mayor, I think it's inappropriate for her to. Be influenced the planning commission's workings.
To influence our workings?
To, yeah, because it could be. Uh it could be, and and I wonder if it has been. Uh a significant input on some of the commissioners.
So I, we're talking about last meeting, the last meeting we have when she popped on to explain.
Yes.
Um I I didn't see it that way. She was answering a question. I wanted to know why we hadn't been involved. When this is really our purview and the whole purpose of us being here is to do this kind of thing, so I appreciated her. Yes, I appreciated her explanation. I I don't necessarily agree with it. I think we should have been involved from the beginning. But at least she.
I'm being over there.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, right, yeah.
The other thing I would say, John, is I went to the trustee meeting last week, week whenever it was. And that I think one of us should always be there. Because you do hear. Exactly what you're saying.
Oh, sure.
She spoke quite. Fluently about, you know, her thoughts about nine hundred and her thoughts about weather would. That otherwise I would not know what she and the other people are thinking. So it's.
That was before our last um PC meeting after our inside PC meeting.
So that that specifically is the reason why we've always had one of the trustees on the planning commission.
Yeah, well, Bob.
Is that we're supposed to be hearing that kind of stuff. But I, what we normally did was had a report from the trustee. It was over by.
Well, Bob's that lead is on now. Bob, Bob.
Miller.
Miller.
Uh Bob Miller.
But unfortunately, the sequence goes the wrong way.
That's true.
We hear it before linger. So. So he, if he were here tonight, he could have told us what the trustees talked about last week, I guess. So to your point, I think that's valuable. And I'm not sure if that's where you're coming from, but. That's where I hear what she's thinking is at trustee meeting.
Oh, so the question I have, and I guess for you too, since you voted against. You know, they they made the presentations, we had a PC meetings, we said, hey, make these modifications. They came back with those modifications. And then. We, wow. Uh half of the PC meeting uh was, oh, that's fine, but then. There were, there was the commission that to go additionally. Yeah, those changes were great, but essentially you gotta move it forward.
So speaking for me.
Yeah.
I voted no both times. Because I didn't like the fact that it was sixty feet.
Oh, you voted no the first time, okay, all right.
But but I think when, remember the sequence of things, Steve could have talked to it better. The trustees declined it. And sent it back, or they didn't decline, they sent it back here. For us to think about that part of the code that says. We would like the building to be a should and true.
We like it, but it's not a requirement.
But my my purpose, John, is I voted no because it was sent back by the board. And we serve. At the pleasure of the board, so they give us direction that this is something we should reanalyze, and this is why. One of them was because it wasn't up adjacent to the board club. Then that has a pretty big impact on the. I guess what decision we should be making.
Yeah, but you got that information. I didn't get that information.
You did, you did. It was in the staff report.
Huh?
The staff report clearly said, this is what the board of trustees, why they sent it back to us. And then Bob Miller sat here and told us what the trustees said.
And you have that discussion on the should versus a shall.
And so that is the reason my vote.
That opened up that interpretation and that was the sighting for why.
Okay.
The no one.
And it was a recommendation, uh not a mandate, but it was a their recommendation.
Have to understand, it failed, so there was a recommendation.
Yeah.
Or there was a motion to recommend. And the commission failed to secure a majority vote.
Right.
To move that recommendation forward.
Right.
And the guidance specifically that I received from the attorney when I texted him. And I asked about the three three, because Julie and I actually thought it was the other way.
Yeah.
That clearly, and what he wrote, because I've read it several times, does it apply?
Oh, oh.
A lot of things is is that. But then. The commission, a commissioner could have rephrased the motion.
Okay.
In such a way that the vote may have changed. And that's the way the process works. So really, I I I agree with. Commissioner Bishop, her intent was to clarify at that position, and I think that. That's the reason that I did ask you is because you are correct. I I don't want to see any trustee. Other than the representative.
Right.
Coming in here and speaking in the same discussive manner to insert themselves in the discussion. Other than to clarify things.
No, that's great, okay. All right, well, I better understand everything.
It's a good discussion. Interviews.
Um none of those right now. We we haven't.
I think it's very dangerous operating in a three three time. And it could happen a lot when you have six people.
Start recruiting friends, meeting another person that's flying again next week. I have, I have zero interest from anybody, so. You gotta get some friends together.
And.
Just stay home.
I am, I am the.
That's right.
I can make it a scanning item. My manager's report until we get one. They'll be on there and we will say the planning commission is seeking a commissioner, application of survey. I will do it in every meeting this.
So you gotta.
Every time someone comes in to complain to me, I say, there's no need on the planning commission.
It's the worst.
As it goes.
Say, it's a much more work than trustee position.
Well, Julie and I just saw the listener, they just needed to drive me well.
I think trustees are having a longer meeting. All they can do is hurt.
Thank you. So James, we just I sent out your deal with the majority issue.